It is a little bit past six and we're going to start the meeting. Can I have an acceptance of the agenda?
So moved.
Second by Mr. Harris, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, it is unanimous. So we are going to start this evening with some, with walk-ins. Is there any walk-ins? Seeing none, we will move on to the report of the town administrator.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I want to skip around a little bit since there's some things in your packet that called out particularly in this. As you know, we had some weather last week and as I speak, we're getting ready for some more weather this weekend. You have in your packet, an update from Mike Breen of some of the impacts that we had. As he notes, this was a rather long-duration storm, 17 hours. We're so used to bad storms that comparatively, this really was something that was fairly moderate for us, but it still costs the town money for cleanup in the usual areas where we get flooding and debris overwash, Oceanside, Turner, Rebecca, Lighthouse, Central Ave. So even though this has probably been one of the more milder winters we've had in five or six years, our snow budget is pretty much already expended. And that's because of the costs it, the town incurs for the cleanup in these overwashed areas, as well as, we do a lot of, we did a lot of pre-treating for this last snowstorm. So I think if you don't see the request to vote deficit spending for snow at the next meeting, you will the meeting after that. This evening, and I have Sean, Sean is here in case the board has any questions about Seventh Avenue. I mean, there was flooding that did not drain in Seventh Avenue, we got some calls about that. People didn't understand why it never happened in the worst storm while it was there. That drain and many drains in the area and the catch basins are regularly cleaned. That was already cleaned in the past year. But this past storm created a relatively unique situation with seaweed, we believe, clogging the outfall, which we can't even get to. The area has been cleaned up, I actually just drove by there about an hour ago, but Sean, if you want to explain to the board more technically that I probably couldn't, what was happening, because again, it was something that hadn't typically happened, I think, in this area and it took the DPW a while to get at it. I would encourage people who have questions about particular areas of town during storm cleanup to call us. And it, it sort of makes people more concerned when there's speculation out there, but this was clearly a unique situation and Sean, if you could update the board, that'd be great.
Sure. Mr. Chairman, yes. I think the town administrator said that appropriately. It seemed like an awful lot of seaweed overwash this time and it was identified after, didn't drain as quick. Now typically, it takes two or three days to drain anyways out of this area because the outfall is located out into the ocean. There are two grates, stainless steel grates located on the sides of this outfall that allow the water to drain when the tide allows. You could see the, the water spraying out from around the seaweed that was stuck in the grate because it was under pressure. And I think that allowed more water to flood the marsh area, which is one of the areas we're looking at right now. And for the third time, we've applied for a grant to fix the drainage in this area. Hopefully, this adds a little oomph with the state. But possibly thinking of a stormwater pump outfall instead, like Hull uses, then it doesn't matter where the tide is, we can alleviate that flooding quicker without waiting for the tide to recede. Just one of our thoughts, we'll be looking into that. But it seemed to be that the outlet was plugged with some of the marsh grasses and seaweed that made us through the way through the drains. The drain cleaning company did come in on Friday, opened the grates, cleaned the catch basins again. They weren't overly cluttered with stone. There was seaweed that either had made its way through. We dropped a pump into the final manhole, started pumping the water rather than letting the drain drain it over the seawall to try to alleviate that flooding, although by now, that whole marsh had quite a bit of water in it, more so than typical, so it took a while for that to recede.
Did somebody actually go out and clean the drain?
Yep, on Friday. No, those gates are bolted and that's something we're going to start to look into because you can't go out and take those off with pressure behind it. Somebody will get killed, you know, if you try to. And I don't know if there's a way that they, I don't think you want to remove them because then you get the ocean filling them with stone during the storm. Now you have stone. So you don't have stone in there, but how do you alleviate that after, either with a latched grate, something to think about in the future.
So did the seaweed go from the marsh to the drain?
Correct, through the catch basins, yep.
So how, but you cleaned it out?
You'd have to take the grates off to do it.
Why, how did it start working?
How did it stop work?
Start working?
I think it's just, it's pushed the seaweed out through it and it's spraying out. Right, today is draining fine. Thursday or Friday, when it was still flooded and there was a lot of pressure behind it, it was spraying out in areas of the grate, not pouring out like it was today. I don't know if it just takes time for it to eventually push its way through the slots in the grate, which typically, we don't have time to wait around for.
Can you get a visual on that end of it? I mean, can you get a visual on the other end or is it, so how far out is it?
At the right tide, I think it's right at low tide. The water's right at the toe of that outfall. So it's, you know, it's 50, 75.
So somebody's actually looked at it and it's clean?
Yeah, the water was flowing today when I, the tide was out and the, I opened the manhole as well to make sure that seaweed or whatever hadn't worked its way in the last couple of days through it. Not a piece of seaweed in the drain line and it was flowing. Pipe was half-full, so it wasn't under pressure from upstream, so to speak.
Right. Sean?
Sean, can you maybe through the town administrator, ask that guy who had the drone on Peggy Beach, have him do the same thing on Sand Hills? Before and after, something like that? I have a good idea what you're talking about, a real good idea, but I haven't seen it.
Yeah. So. I haven't seen, I've seen, I've seen the video, I don't know who took it though.
No, no. I'm sure we can get in touch with them, but that would be, I think, quite helpful.
I have one from 10th, from 10th Ave, that area, from the same town.
The next outfall up?
Yeah.
On the town piece?
Yeah.
Very similar, although that doesn't have grates on it.
No, no, I'm saying, we have the same, we've got the drone pictures, I've got the drone pictures.
Oh, nice.
Of that area.
I'd love to see them, yeah, sure.
So what do we do so it doesn't happen again?
Well, we'll look at, take a look at replacing that grate or somehow either opening the openings that are already in it to allow some of that to flush out quicker. I don't know, like I say, hopefully, we receive that grant this year and that's exactly what that'll do is it will give us alternatives for this area. It's been historic flooding area. So we're looking at opportunities or different solutions for this area specifically.
Yeah, and if we don't get the grant, we should probably cost out what it's going to be anyways and see.
Even if it's just modifying the outfall at this time, so that that doesn't happen, you know, it doesn't get blocked up at the very end, you still have the tide to deal with. When it's high, you're not going to get a whole lot of draining until the tide recedes, then it will let it out. But.
Any other questions?
I just have one question. Can you just help us all understand why we couldn't get in there sooner to start pumping? Was it the, the height of the flooding that was in there or, you know, why we had to wait till Friday to actually get in there with the larger vehicle and pump to start getting that water out?
Yeah, Seventh Ave was localized, I think on Thursday, they found, they got the pump over to that manhole. That did have to do with some of the flooding as well as getting the pump to do that, putting it in there. And then that's not going to happen overnight, so to speak. It was a lot of water. It spread out over a big area and when you think of not only the marsh, but all the pipes that are holding water, and then all of a sudden out today, we have the rain on top of that. And last night certainly didn't add to it. I don't know what the timeframe was for the highway department. The grates look clean today when I went out there as well. I think it was something they continually picked at as the water receded from the different areas. I could get more detail on their response, time from the highway department if.
Yeah, I just don't know if there were some limitations with the depth, you know, the trucks couldn't get in there or just.
It was on, on Seventh, even on Thursday, when I went down. Oceanside Drive had drastically changed in one day, just from natural draining. And then I'm sure the pump helped, but like I said, there was a lot of areas, I think, that it was flooded that you don't see. That'll find its way back to the drainage system, so it, even though it looks like things are dropping, it's being replaced by overland flooding in the marsh that you don't see. So I think it continues to come, even though you're working at getting it out.
Thanks, Sean.
You're welcome.
So we had Kevin working, Kevin Kelly, thanks Sean, all weekend. We had a couple of issues in other municipal buildings, some minor issues with lower temperatures in the library that Kevin worked on. The pipes froze in the kitchen at the Council on Aging, that they got defrosted. One of the heaters in the fire headquarters bay froze up, that they had to get a torpedo heater into that. And then the diesel pumps froze at the highway. So the staff was really responding to a number of different things this past weekend and with the weather last weekend, trying mostly to clear the overwash and the snow and get the sidewalks clean so kids could get to school. Tonight, Chief Murphy's on vacation, but Deputy Elliott has advised me that they're expecting some high winds tonight and with icing and heavy, heavy rain, which anybody who came here this evening just went through, so I'm preaching to the choir. But there is obviously with the damaging winds we have in the coastal area, always a chance of downed tree limbs and wires and scattered power outages, so we're gearing up for that. So that takes care of that. The public facilities update, the groundbreaking was canceled for the school because of the weather, that's been rescheduled to March 16th at noon. You've seen, I think, a lot of the foundation pouring of cement and drainage at both the library and the public safety building, the perimeter area of the public safety building you can start to see. And we expect steel delivery for both those projects, the end of this month, beginning of next month. So things are going to start to cap in, once the deal is there, then you'll see the real framing of the building start to take place. Quick FEMA update, I really don't have anything new to tell the board from my last meeting. We've been in touch, both Marshfield and I, with Leslie Fields from the Woods Hole Group to see if FEMA has reached out to her. Leslie may be away, but we're going to put a call into FEMA tomorrow, Rocco Longo, the Marshfield Town Administrator and I, to, to get an update on how those things are going. But as far as FEMA stuff goes, right now, no news is good news because, you know, we're just waiting for them to work together to see if anything else happens.
Does Duxbury, Tricia, have their town meeting?
Duxbury's town meeting is the end of March.
It's end of March?
Yeah.
Okay, did they, okay.
Right.
Because they're, they're the first ones to adopt the maps.
Well, they'll let, we have six months to adopt the maps, once we actually get them issued. And so they'll issue the maps in the letter of final determination and once you get that, you have six months. So for us, we're looking at a special town meeting if and when we get maps that we agree with. So the longer we don't get them, obviously FEMA is well aware now that they're going to miss the town meetings for these three communities at least, so.
I was just wondering whether or not Duxbury had actually placed it on their warrant to adopt those maps or not.
It's still early because their warrant hasn't actually been posted. I can check with Rainey tomorrow. I mean, we still have a placeholder on ours, but I haven't written any language for it because, you know, even if we get them, our warrant's going to be posted, you know, you have to finalize everything, so the advisory committee booklet can do it. You're going to have a draft warrant at your next meeting in two weeks, so I think there's some reasonable surety that they will not be on this town meeting. And as you know, that will also, that six months will give us an opportunity to explore other options as well, depending on, on what happens. But, but right now, I'm cautiously optimistic, so like I said, no news is good news right now and I'll try and find out more for the board later this week and let you know and also folks at the Coastal Coalition. One of the things we talked about at our last meeting was the cell tower by the police station, there's information in your packet that Nancy and Michelle Segesi of my office put together. As you know, we had a request from AT&amp;T to extend the lease that we have for the cell tower from 2021 to 2046, which raised the question of the, what the board saw as the long-term future. As you can see, we have two leases there. One ends in 2032, one ends in 2022. If we choose not to renew the lease from AT&amp;T, that would be a net loss of around $120,000 a year, but we'd also.
120?
If you look at the bottom, the 70, we get $80,000 a year, plus we get a percentage of the co-location.
That's Sprint.
I think we're missing, I don't, yeah.
Eighteen.
Sprint, sorry.
That's the bottom one.
Right.
So 20 grand here?
So, yeah, it's 20, $20 a year if we decide not to let them extend till 2046.
2046?
2046 is the request that we received. So you don't have to, obviously, it's not on your agenda to discuss vote, but I think we should agenda item it for our next meeting because we do have to formally let them know and they've been, had, waiting for a response for us, so something to consider.
What?
Would someone come in that might be able to answer questions? I think you and I had a quick conversation about if we could locate a pole in the vicinity of this one. Because who knows what's going to happen with this property, you know, but if, is that something that's doable? I don't know. I don't know if you know.
Well, right, I think we need to have a bigger agenda item discussion about it because this cellular wave, microwave lengths do a waffle pattern, so they bounce from link to link. So if this became decommissioned at any time, it would need to be replicated somewhere in this area because of the way they need to link. And, you know, we're actually going to be using this to go to the new public safety building. The question is, is the lattice tower design and where it is right now has sort of encumbered us for really being able to look at this land and it's sort of an attractive nuisance as well, so even though we do get substantial revenue from it.
Right. So are we, are we locked in till 2032?
So 20, yeah, unless we.
2022.
Want to locate another cell tower somewhere approximate here and have that conversation with them because they would still be able to locate elsewhere. But where that is and what you want to do, again, it would have to be in this area.
Okay, so 2022 is what this one is, 2032 is the transfer station?
That's correct.
And they want?
So this one's 2022, just to clarify for people listening, and AT&amp;T, which is co-located on this tower, has asked the town to extend the 2022 lease to 2046. Yeah.
Okay. Do you want to put it on an agenda for, how quickly do we have to get back to them?
I, I would like to do it if the next meeting, Tony, just because I think we've had the request for about six weeks.
The one thing, Tricia, I'd want to know is this, assuming for the sake of argument, well, one thing would be to relocate it here on the property with an option, but more importantly is whether or not we could actually move it to another site. And obviously, I'm thinking of some land in the West End. There's like an acre or so that we might be purchasing through CBC that might be just ideal for it because it's surrounded by conservation land and I was wondering whether or not we could have that explored because it would connect to, you know, triangulate between the tower up and the public safety building, down to the transfer station, and then we'd get it out of this location here and make it more productive.
Yeah, it's, we would have to have that analysis because I don't know what the distance is. I used to, but I think it's changed. But as long as they can get their ping, you know, to do the microwave, they can.
Who would be the one to do the analysis? Because that's, that's important to me before I decide to extend it until 2046.
Right, well, actually, we can actually ask AT&amp;T to do that for us and they will know right away. So we'll try to get that answer for you before we schedule it on the agenda and if we can't by the next meeting, then we'll wait until we can.
Good.
So we could look at a radius, John, to your point and see how, if it's not this, how close within the radius they could do it.
Exactly.
Okay.
Has, may I ask a question, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, you may.
Has T-Mobile asked for an extension as well? Because if we're going to ask AT&amp;T to give us a proposal to reconfigure anything, obviously that's going to impact T-Mobile.
We don't have a pending, yeah, we don't have a pending request for T-Mobile at this time.
So they could move with it, say, just hypothetically, if it moved?
I don't, I honestly don't know the answer to that.
Reach out and tell them.
Yeah. I don't know the answer to that, but we can check before then.
Yeah.
I mean, certainly, they're the lowest payer on that poll, so we're not going to extend them for $20,000 a year, for an additional 25 years, without the other three carriers.
That's correct. The proposal also includes a price increase for the courtesy of extending it another 25 years, right. And the last two things you have in your packet is I periodically, and I haven't done this for all, like to include the development review team list of everything that's going on in town, both public and private. I think it is the longest it has been since we started doing it six and a half years ago. It is up to 11 pages of development in the town, so folks.
But this is a great document. It's, and I, can we get this on the website, Lorraine? Because this is, this gives you an up-to-date account of everything that's going on in this town for the most part in terms of development, projects.
I would actually ask you to hesitate on that because some of this information I'd like to look at before we readily agree to do this. This is an internal working document, so.
Well, maybe we can get a summary of.
Yeah. I think we can, can do it, but as is, I would.
Yeah, that makes sense.
Because personally, I think it's confusing because I'd like to know if some of this is closed out because as you said, we've been keeping track for such a long time and there are highlights on some and not all, so.
So again, this is an internal, and everything on here is not closed out. So if it's on here, it means it's still active. Oftentimes, we had, 40B was on here for a couple of years more where it was permitted in 2003, 2004, and we just had a line item. Both Stockbridge Woods and I want to say Walden Woods were both, you know, permitted a long time ago and now they're both active. But everything here is, is pretty much active.
It's a great document.
And this, this is put together by Laura in the planning board and then every other Tuesday, all the staff gets together and meets. And as we've added stuff like foreshore protection and public facilities and coastal stuff, we've, we've sort of expanded it, but it just gives you a flavor of just this one area of town and how, how busy we are in addition to everything else. And then the last and final thing is I gave you an updated listing of where we are relative to town meeting items that are non-monetary, non-budget. So that was provided to the advisory committee last Friday. So we're sort of coming down to the wire and getting ready for town meeting. And that's all I have. Sorry to take so long.
Okay. Any questions on any of the topics that are on page three? You know, the list of items that Tricia lists? Nope. Gator meeting. Great. All right, then we can move forward with, the next item is to discuss and review the fiscal year 217 budgets. And we are going to start with social, regional vote tech, high school. Jack? That's Jack? Jack, give us one second, just get our.
It's in the packet and then we receive a copy of some additional documents today. Good job. I'm going to.
So Jack, how long have you been doing this?
13, 14 years, I guess now.
Great. So you're the expert?
Yeah, right.
This is the, is this the highest enrollment that we've had there?
No. The highest since I've been around is, I believe was 44. We're at 42 now, so it's the, I believe it's the largest one-year increase with 10 students, which is quite significant. It speaks well for the school and we do have a waiting list there. We're busting at the seams. I think we have a total enrollment of 621 students and we're pretty much beyond capacity. We are an old school, we're trying to reconfigure classrooms and things like that. We just completed a, a new boiler, the original boiler was just replaced, so we are moving along. And like I say, there's 10 additional students this year for an increase of about 31% in student enrollment, which is reflected in the assessment.
Right, and our assessment went up?
$139,000.
Well, that's easy math, 14,000 a student?
Yeah, it's actually, yeah, right. And which is, under tuition would be paying if we were not in district school, basically, because it's about 14.5 for out-of-district plus transportation. So this includes the transportation costs and being a member of the district.
And what is their overall budget? Is it, did it go up? It's pretty level-funded, right?
See, the overall budget? Let's see, what does it give me? It went up 2.9%, 2.91, and an increase of 352,000. Okay, the fiscal year budget is $12,455,356.
And you said it went up 3%?
2.91, just under 3.
Which is?
That's for the whole school.
That's for the whole school, yeah.
Well, I guess it's good and bad. It's good that we've got our population growing there, it's bad because the.
We have to pay more.
Our debt's going high, right, exactly.
Yeah, it's a double-edged sword, it always is.
So we didn't really expect that. Did we, did we level fund that, Tricia?
We included a 3% increase in the financial forecast in December and we've had to adjust that now.
Right.
And the original estimate we got was one or two, one less student, so, and then we ended up with one more, so we're about.
We had to raise it 20, 30,000, I think, from the forecast.
Any questions for Jack? Wanted to go over the formula on how we, at this rate?
Yeah.
No.
How long do you want the meeting to go? Because I can't figure it out. 25 pages long, I think.
Right. So basically, there's one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight local communities that participate in this.
Eight towns, yes.
How many out of town, towns participate?
I think this year, we have nine out of district.
Total of 17?
Yeah.
Students or towns?
Towns.
Well, students, and I'm not sure how it breaks down on towns.
No, but what other towns, you mentioned out of district, like Marshfield, I think is one of them.
Yeah, I think Marshfield, I think Hingham has one there and.
So there's only a couple other towns that are not listed on this?
Right. But it's a total of nine students that are out of, what we call out of district.
So there's almost 1,800 kids at the school, it's a $12 million budget, and the biggest users are Abington and Rockland.
Right.
Whitman.
And of course, that's when the formula kicks in from the state, there's, you know, it's, I think, because of the fact that Situette can pay more, they, our rate is a little higher than some of the other towns.
Okay, well, unfortunately, there's not much we can do about this line of the budget. It is, it is what it is, they do have, did they already have their final budget meeting?
No.
I know.
It's next week.
That's an average. Great. Any questions from, from?
No.
Great. Well, Jack, thank you for giving us the update. If you can just send us one that is, I know I've been to a couple of them, I know John's been to a couple, I'm sure Sean has as well.
Oh, the budget meeting?
Yeah.
Is next, well, it's a week from tomorrow night.
Tomorrow night?
Yeah.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Dave, how are you?
Good, how are you?
Good.
Hi, everybody. I have with me tonight Allison Short, who is one of our trustees.
Hi, Allison.
Hi.
Great, why don't you give us a little overview on what you've done on these buildings and what you want to do and.
Okay. Well, what I, what I usually do every year is just go over very quickly what our mission statement is. And I've said this before, but. And I've said this before, but in the 1930 town report, there was mention that municipality is judged in good part by how well it keeps up with public buildings, including historical buildings. I was always impressed by that statement because it was at the beginning of the Depression. The town of Situate owns six historical sites, the Cudworth House, Situate Lighthouse, the Mann House, the Massachusetts Humane Society Boathouse, Lawson Tower, the Lawson Gates, and the Bates House. The society has been the oversight agency for all those buildings for many, many years. By a vote of town meeting, the society was given custody administration of the White House back in 1968 and Lawson Gates in 1972. One of our main goals every year is public outreach and education, especially to kids every year, including this past, this past year. Every Situate school at grade three sent their kids to the historical sites. It seems as though every year we have more and more students participating in that. We also have a number of schools that come in from out-of-district to do the same thing. We are actively planning now for our 100th anniversary of incorporation. That's coming up next year. You'll be hearing a lot more about that. So there's a lot of things going on. In terms of our budget, I submitted a budget this year that totaled to $14,894 plus $6,000 for rental of the GIR Hall by town boards and committees, and Allison is going to speak to that. It looks like the town administrator approved pretty much our budget, with the exception of the $6,000 rental for the GIR Hall. So we don't have any real issues with that at all. Last year, as you recall, we put in some oversight money, and that seemed, the number of hours being expended on that seems to be pretty much on target. That oversight includes dealing with all of the town-owned buildings. Has nothing to do with the society-owned buildings, by the way. And so that has been, that has been fine. So that's kind of where we're at. The other comment that I would like to make, and we did have a meeting with the, with Tricia, no, no, maybe two weeks ago, and we have worked up a capital plan looking out for the next five years at what the various town-owned historical buildings are going to need. Tricia has a copy of that. Just very quickly, the White House, the anticipated cost over the next five years might be around 35,000. The Bates House, 50,000. Mann House, 11,000. Edward House, 21,000. Lawson Tower, 17,000. And the Lawson Gates, 5,000. Now, that sounds worse than it really is, but I just want to remind the board that we have rental income coming in from the White House and the Mann House. We don't have rental income. We have no other source of income other than the budget request for the other buildings. So that works out to, it's about 2,000, our request, by the way, for the, for the main budget is about $2,000 for a building. These other costs, if they come to fruition, and they very well could, that I just mentioned, it's not quite as bad as it sounds, because the White House rental account should be able to handle what's needed there. The Mann House rental account should be able to handle what's there. The town bought the Bates House with community preservation funding. The society committed $25,000 to the maintenance of that, that house over the next few years. We haven't had to do a whole lot there yet, so our 25,000 is essentially in place. If the total is in fact 50,000, and that 50,000, by the way, includes installing a new kitchen when the present tenant leaves, for now, she's satisfied with it, and it would include a new heating system. The other reason I mention this is that we're going to have to start seriously thinking about increasing the maintenance line item for this budget starting next year, because we can't let these things go. In the past, we had funding from the, the train money. I think there's only 11,000 or so left from that, so there are going to be some costs, but it's not quite as bad as it might seem on the surface. So Allison wants to address the rental account issue.
Before we get there, can I ask a question?
Yeah.
Dave, aside from Situate being 100 years with the Historical Society, what other towns surrounding us? I know Marshfield, they don't have any buildings that they have saved like we have here in the town. Other towns similar?
I don't know of any other town, maybe even of the state, that has a total of 12 historical buildings. Six that we own, and that's, it's 13 if you count Lawson Gates. That would be seven that the town owns. I don't, I don't know of anybody else that has anything close to that. Quincy certainly doesn't either. It's impressive, what we've been able to do. But that all comes with a cost.
Right. Sorry, just was curious. Thanks.
Our request for $6,000 is for the use of the GIR Hall by the town, various town committees and boards. Looking at the February schedule, there are seven meetings now planned, and from March there are six. It's an expense that the Historical Society would have to fund if, you know, for the town committees to be in there. We, we operate on a very limited budget, not, you know, every penny is definitely accounted for. So to open our doors, you know, seven times in February and six times in March is an expense to us that we can't absorb.
The, the society is concerned because we, looking at, at the situation, we are running annually about $12,000 deficit at the hall, when you, when you consider all the rentals and all the free occupations that we're allowing there. The heat, the air conditioning, the water, the cleaning, the booking, we have a booking person that's paid. So it all, and as I'm sure you know, I mean, there's these same costs that you face over at the Maritime Center. So that's, that's why we put that in there, and it's based on a, a use of $125 per use for 48 weeks. That's how we base it, and that comes out to $6,000. This, Allison, why don't you just give them a rundown of the committees that are using the month, the building in the month of February?
We have the advisory committee, CPC, the fire department training. That's for February, and pretty much the same for March. The advisory committee is there every week. CPC is in there.
No.
So.
So it's.
So help me, so you're asking us to pay you $6,000?
Not, not in a lump sum, no. I mean, if you use, if the town used the building less, then it would be less than that. Yeah, I guess the only way, and Trish would certainly be able to answer that, I guess the only way to do this would be to fund it in the budget, but if it's not expended, then it's not spent.
Yeah, I.
The other thing I'd like to add in, the building was restored, as you know, and it was reopened in 2008, so that's seven years ago. We really tried to make the building available to anybody at town hall that needed space, plus community groups that we knew didn't have any funds, Girl Scouts and Cub Scouts and that kind of thing. But it's gotten to the point where we're, we're looking at a major financial crunch here of 12,000 a year, and it just can't keep going on like that.
Didn't we use town funds to restore the building?
Yes, you did.
And now you want to charge the people that paid to restore it?
Well, I mean, the reality is, the reality is, we're facing that deficit. For seven years, we've given the building away. I, I don't know that we can do it in the future. That's what the trustees are saying. Allison is one of the trustees. She's going to be making, she's going to be one of those votes, and we're just giving you a heads up that that's what we're, that's what we're facing. I know what you're coming, I know where you're coming from, you're saying, yo, we gave you some funding to, from CPC, but the fact of the matter is, this building still is running this deficit. When we did meet with Tricia, she had some ideas of how maybe to approach it. I don't know if she wants to get into that tonight or not.
You want to get into this tonight or not?
Well, I, you know, I don't think the town, there's no financial mechanism for us to pay rent for the use of a municipal facility. This budget has doubled. It's actually increased by 60% since FY11. And that doesn't diminish the work that the committee does or whatever. The advisory committee, we asked the commission if the, the society, if we could use that building, because we're crunched for meeting spaces right now, and they acknowledged that. I think it's a slippery slope and a bad precedent, and I'm much opposed to just the concept of it. That doesn't mean that they don't have expenses, but I do not think we should be in a position, as I've outlined in my recommendation, to paying, to use a facility that taxpayers have already paid for. However, when Dave and I met, and as you can see, they have not really expended what we've appropriated in the last six years. If you look, and, you know, that budget, as I said, has increased. It's recommended to increase again in FY16 by their request. But we looked at sort of, sort of in-kind stuff, like plowing, trash removal, things like that. Some of the costs that they incur, they incur regardless of whether the town's using them for heat and electricity. Those things have to occur anyway. But mostly is, there's no mechanism in the town budget to us to pay rent for use of another facility.
So now we even have no questions. Do you have a couple of questions?
You may.
So with regards to that, so that'll start there. With expended, so FY15, the budget was 11,350, and they expended $3,711. Are we moving that over into free cash at the end of the year? Where's that balance going? So that's going into free cash.
Mm-hmm.
So you're not even using your current budget.
What?
So that's number one. Number two, I need better understanding because I completely respect preserving all our historical buildings. But where does your other source of revenue come from? If you have a $12,000 deficit on a $13,000 budget, where, where are the other sources of revenue that come into your society that we're not seeing?
Don't, don't mix up the buildings that are owned by the town with the buildings that are owned by the society.
So the budget is for the town?
Budget that you're looking at is for the town-owned buildings. GIR Hall is owned by the society.
So we can't.
So all the costs of running the GIR Hall are on the society.
It's on the society side.
Exactly.
Comes out of our expenses. So if you could answer my question, where does that other revenue come from? I understand you just sold some property. So is that property revenue going into your society budget?
Yes.
And how much was that sale for?
That property that we, that we just sold, you're talking about?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's, that's on, that's on, that's for the buildings and the functions and the operations that the society.
So that would cover the GIR Hall?
It would, yeah, but there are other, there are other costs there. I mean, we're not flush with money.
Yeah, I'm just trying to understand.
How much money?
Trying to get like a sense of the whole picture.
And this is, years ago, Rick Murray, I think it was a wise decision, asked that the, the budget, the town budget, be changed from simply Historical Society. It used to be in the town budget would be listed as Historical Society line. And it was changed to Historical Buildings. Maybe it would be even better to call it Town-Owned Historical Buildings, because it's all, especially for the public, I know there's confusion out there. Who owns what? And that's why, when I started this, I read off the buildings that the town owned.
Yep.
So the budget, the $20,000 request is for town-owned building, well, let me back up. The $14,894 that we requested is for town-owned buildings, and then where the $6,000 would be for the rental use of the GIR Hall. So it's the town-owned buildings, like the White House, Mann House, Cudworth House, those are town-owned. The GIR Hall and the Grismill and the Maritime Museum and all the others are owned by us.
Okay.
So we're dealing with.
Yeah, we get, so you mentioned our $25,000 earlier. How much money does the society have?
In total?
Sure.
I'd have to get you that number. I can't give it to you off the top of my.
About.
There's an endowment that we have. I'm going to guess the endowment is probably $900,000 at this point. And, and we're eating into that endowment. We're, we have an endowment committee. The endowment committee oversees the, the investment of those funds. The trustees, for the last three or four years now, have had to go to them, probably on average twice a year, asking, would you say, Allison, twice a year? Asking for, you know, money's out of that. We're running, we're, we're spending more money than we're taking in. That's the, that's the problem.
Is there like a mission for the building? What, what is the, or for all the buildings, I guess? What is, what's the, you know, the society's taking these buildings on and taking care of them. Is there some sort of mission that you go by? Is it supposed to be for public use? Is it supposed to be for just restoration? What is it supposed to?
Well, I mean, each building is obviously has a very different function. The Maritime Museum has a different function than the Little Red Schoolhouse.
Well, we can't use the Little Red Schoolhouse anymore, right? I don't.
I, I, the trustees don't like to rent out that building because there have been some things that have gone missing. And when I say that, I want to make clear, it's not anything to do with anybody that we know of, and it's certainly not anybody in the town. But it's not a building that lends itself well to, to that kind of a use. So the GIR Hall is the building that we like to use if somebody has the function that they want to use it, you know, if they want to go for a function. That's where, that's what's available.
So is it kind of the mission for, for the public to use that building? Is that what the use of the building is?
GIR Hall has several different uses. It's used by groups that put on community plays. It's used by another group for children's theater.
Oh, I know. It goes, I.
People rent it for functions.
They rent it for functions.
Yeah.
For weddings, for bridal showers.
And every time somebody goes in, we incur a cost of setting it up, cleaning it up, what we provide for you, the tables, the chairs, there's Wi-Fi available in there, there's security in there, there's a folk, there's a kitchen.
That's why it's running, that's why it's running, it's running at a deficit of around $1,000 a month or $12,000 a year.
So every time we open the doors, it's the society that's incurring the expense.
How much is it for a private function?
I think it depends on what it is.
It depends on what day of the week it is. It's never more than 300, $300.
And as little as how much?
If somebody really needs it.
Oh, like a nonprofit, then you.
Yeah. It might be $50 if it was just a small little group that has, you know, very limited funds. If it was a private funeral, after a private funeral on a weekday, late weekday morning, it might be 150, 175, 200 dollars. It's never more than 300 dollars. We're in competition with you guys, with the Maritime Center.
So you've averaged it out to be about $115?
About $115 a week.
A week.
So that's, you know, you go in there twice a week, that's $75 each time. You're really, that's, we're still, you know, we're probably just going to break even left off.
I mean, I can understand where you're coming from, I guess. I understand you're saying we shouldn't be paying public funds or.
There's no mechanism to pay rent to an entity that's not town-owned.
It's not town-owned. I see. So that's our problem. We don't have the ability to pay.
Rent.
Rent. That's our problem.
You know, we've met with Tricia, you know, I pointed out, well, yeah, I guess so, but the, the school committee rented the Hatch Building down in Green Bush, or, I don't know, it was 30,000 a year for their offices when they had to move out of here. I mean, I understand money's tight. Money's tight for the town, money's tight for the society.
Right. No, I got it.
Yeah.
I, I got it.
I mean, that's just, I mean, the whole fact that we, when they need another repair, they're going to come to CPC and use taxpayer money to fix the building again. So it's, it's, you know, it's a catch.
I mean, like, you just want to look at your private costs of what you're charging folks coming in from the outside. That's where I would look first.
We have, and we have, and.
Because as you said, you know, space is, is tight, and it's a really nice desirable location, and you got great, your facilities are actually better there than Maritime, other than the, the venue in the summer. But as far as like the whole kitchen setup and the stage, it's actually nicer, so I don't know, that would be.
We can't just give it away.
No, but that, no, I'm saying the opposite. My, my, my point is that you go up and. My, my, my point is that you go up and, and?
To private people, so they have to absorb the cost of other people using it. I mean, it's, it's only fair that if you're going to use the building, you pay the cost of renting it.
Yeah, but you're not?
But the taxpayers are already paying through, with the CPC funds, the taxpayers have already paid a lot of that cost that other private people may not have.
Just to, just, the CPC funds restored the building. They don't cover the expenses every year.
No, I understand that fully.
Yeah, so that's, I mean, yes, I understand where you're coming from, that CPC did pay to restore that building, but that was so many years ago and expenses go along with it. And everything has an expense budget. If you are running in the red, then you go to find ways to support that expense.
I guess the other comment I would make, I remember back in 1995 when we heard that the town was, not a walk away from the GAR Hall. I told the trustees, everybody was horrified, the comment that we were hearing is, well, we'll sell the building off for a building house lot. And that's why?
Dave, I don't even know what you're talking about.
Yeah, well, I mean, it's a long time ago, but, I mean, that's what would have happened to that building if the society hadn't stepped in.
And if the town didn't step in and paid to restore it?
Well, yeah, I mean, the town didn't pay the whole rest, you know, there wasn't, it wasn't the whole restoration, but the society put in a huge amount of money as well.
Okay. All right, well, I guess at this point, we'll, that'll be a sidebar. We'll have to figure out whether we want to proceed with using that building or not.
Right.
Is that the only place available to the town to use?
Right now it is, yeah.
What about the schools?
Um, the schools, well, sometimes we do use the schools, but that's not always available. You know, there's other stuff going on there. But if you don't want us to use it, then?
Yeah, you say the GRA Hall is off limits and we would just have to communicate that to boards, that's all.
Let's, let's take a look at it, okay? I mean, it's because of all the building analysis, the spaces are around a premium, but we've lost the library, can't use that space.
No, I understand.
And the problem with the schools are, the school committee controls the school buildings. So they dictate the terms of who can use them and who can't.
And believe me, we'd like to have?
So we can't necessarily pick time, hold on, Dave, we can't just pick a place, a space and say, let's go there. It just doesn't happen that way.
Just in the interim, while things are, I mean, I, I, I know this is because of the library situation.
Right.
Pretty soon we're going to have a new safety center that's going to have a huge meeting room.
Correct.
We're going to have a new middle school with a auditorium that's going to be, you know, top-notch. There are going to be places, this is just for the interim and I would think everybody would want to work together, you know?
Well, we're trying.
Town-owned buildings.
Trying to. The problem is there's no mechanism that says that we have to pay rent. So let's take a look at it and see what can happen.
That's what we're asking, let's take a look at it.
Yeah, just take a look at it and see our side as well.
No, I, I said that. I understand you guys are going in the red. If it were the other way around, you got to rent, people would want to rent space just for that. I get it. All right.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The next budget is council on aging. That is number 541. Good. Linda, how are you?
I'm great, how are you?
Very good.
Good to be here.
You want to start by telling us just a quick synopsis of what's on your guys' plate right now? Quick, not all of it, but?
Okay.
Top couple.
Well, as far as the budget goes, of course, we are able easily to work within the budget. That's been set. It covers our operational, our facility needs. Programming is either self-supported, we have fees for participation. Sometimes it's subsidized by either past or continuing donations that have been made and, and put into the programming revolving account, but we use that judiciously. Also, some grant funding is made available to us, both through the Mass Council on Aging, who have made a lot of efforts to provide those types of grants, whether it is for programming, exercises, any community-based activities that they see a need for. And the formula grant as well, covers a lot of what we might do beyond what the budget covers.
Is there any particular programming going on right now that's?
You know, and it really has been a focus over the last year, of course. Programs attract people. People is interest, interest in what we're doing. Sometimes the programs speak for themselves despite the facility, as long as we can incorporate it into, into the building. Scheduling, of course, is a challenge, but we did have a grant-funded 12-week program called Aging Mastery throughout the fall, from September through December. We offered that out to 30 people, they signed up. We ended up with about 21 completing all 12 weeks. And it was really very successful because it appealed to a wider range of participants than, than some of our programs might have, both the younger, in their 60s, all the way through 85. It dealt with a variety of topics for increasing longevity, wellness, quality of life, and it was very successful. We hope to have that maybe sponsored in the coming year so that we could do it annually each fall, and that is the goal. So Mass Council on Aging supported that this time and then hopefully the community. We did some good publicity, we received some good publicity, and word of mouth, of course, helps us to repeat that and perpetuate that. Volunteering brings a lot of people in the door as well, so they come in and they start to help us out, they see what we do, they decide they might want to participate in something, in something themselves, and then, and then they bring more people in the door. So that's been great, too. Other programs, our cafe talks still continue to be successful and we do rely on the community to come in and share their expertise, share their gifts, share their hobbies, interests, and it does help, again, to bring in a lot of people and they really appreciate that. We get donations from Panera, from Shaw's, from Village Market, and that goes a long way to being able to provide treats, coffee, tea. So, so we try to make it attractive and appealing. In fact, we got a facelift over the summer, which was very helpful and people appreciate that. They come in and at least, it might just be a single room, but it's a nice-looking room and it's comfortable, it's warm, and people are friendly. The staff, I really give them a lot of credit always. Of course, our outreach staff puts themselves out there in the community, but all of the staff at the senior center, transportation, programming, it's, people appreciate what we do, what they do.
Do you have any numbers in terms of how many people are participating?
I do. I would say, all services, if we count transportation programs and outreach, then we're reaching upwards to 1,000 a month. Programming alone, 100 to 200 a month, maybe? Or actually, I shouldn't say that, a week, 400 to 500 a month for, for actual sign-ins, repeat customers.
Great. That's great. And obviously, before getting the budget, the big thing is really the search for the facilities.
The search for that, yeah.
And I know you're working?
We are. We're trying to incorporate anything from the needs assessment study that we can at this time, so a lot of that is programming. It's also reaching out into the community, so that is a big goal, is name recognition, what we do, how we're doing it, and bringing people in and seeing that. So the needs assessment, did caregiver, programming, lifelong learning, exercise for that matter, but also, but also communication. So that's a big goal for this year.
And you know that it's a priority of the board to try and find a new place for you guys, to get you out of that building.
I do, I do.
We've got the Adaptive Use Committee that's looking into that, and I know that you've got?
A lot of conversation.
Some people on your board that are on, on the committee and being involved, so just know that it's still, I think I speak for the board in saying that's?
Well, we're gearing up. I mean, we feel like we're operating under that notion, that, that we can do as much as we can for as many of the people and just continue to increase that as, as the facility allows or the new facility allows.
Great. All right, you want to go into the budget? So your budget this year, again, Nancy, do you have the?
Yeah.
The number that is, so last year we appropriated?
You're going to do that?
$314,000. This year it's $221,000, but we've taken a chunk of money and put them into other budgets. So how much?
So I have a spreadsheet for you, but I, I didn't want to confuse you more. The GATRA funds, so we get reimbursement from GATRA, and right now it's a general fund receipt, so it just goes into the coffers, it doesn't get dedicated to the council on aging transportation costs. And the council on aging monthly submits to GATRA an invoice for their costs and then gets reimbursed off that. So what?
Is that the 22,000?
The town administrator's proposed for next year is to create the GATRA revolving fund, and that would fund the part-time drivers, the vehicle services budget, all of the paratransit ride, that 22,000 dollar line, and the fuels and lubricants. So it would take 60, just shy of $61,000 out of the general fund budget and fund it through GATRA, and there would still be leftover money in that GATRA revolving fund. Between what was requested from the department and what was recommended by the town administrator from those two funding sources, through the, the general fund budget and through GATRA, the only difference is the reclassification of part of the social services manager to the Board of Health.
So that's under part-time salary?
And then, and then postage was consolidated. They don't lose the access to the postage, it's just being consolidated and reflected in the budget. And there were several minor adjustments in different lines, most of them were small increases.
So the overall budget's up, but we're putting it in different pockets, so it looks like it's down.
So that's, I'm just looking for the number that is being moved out of here to other?
It's $60,761.
Okay. And then that doesn't include the 30,000 that is a part-time salary that's going to, did you say health?
Yes.
That's correct.
Yes.
It doesn't include it.
Does not.
Not that number.
Not in that 60,000.
Got it.
So that includes the GATRA money?
Mm-hmm.
The?
Postage.
Postage.
Salary.
The fuels and lubricants. And then the big one is the paratransit ride, the 22,000 dollar line item.
Right.
And that's currently what was being invoiced to GATRA, what their reimbursement is based on.
The 30's got to be in that 60.
Not the 40% of the social services manager.
Where's the?
Do you want to give him the handle?
I'll see.
It's regular salaries.
I'm going to help you with that, of course.
No, okay.
So the requests, the fiscal '16 salary request was 170, the fiscal '17 is 141.
That 30 is the health one?
Mm-hmm, yes.
And what's the part-time salary one?
34,000.
What's that?
That's the third line down.
I know.
93 to 60.
Where's that 30 going? That's GATRA?
That's GATRA.
Okay. I thought GATRA was just a 22.
Yeah.
Okay, that makes sense now. Great. And no, no new employees? Same?
No, same, same employees.
We are, Linda's, we're trying to increase one of the support staff, and Linda suggested the formula grant, but if that should change, then the employees depend on that. I mean, that's, just sort of globally, that's been the challenge with this budget. We had, I think, 11 position requests and a million in requests. So we're trying to find new and creative ways. I mean, all the departments who ask for the staff have legitimate reasons for it, but there's a lot of things in this budget we do that other communities do not do, and we just saw an example of that. So unfortunately, you know, Linda and I will continue to talk, we might have an option through June 30th. It's really not so much, it's, if we can afford it now, it's sustainability the next few years out. That's really been the challenge. But she has great staff and pretty well cross-trained.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
Absolutely.
Any other questions from anyone on the board? Marty or Lee is on anything to add or?
No.
No?
I was a little confused about the numbers, Patricia straightened me out on it earlier. I was up and down, back and forth, but it, you know, it's?
I just want to say thank you, Linda, for continuing to do all the work that you and your staff do down there with those resources.
Thank you, my pleasure, our pleasure.
Hang in there.
We will, we are. Happy to.
We're going to get a new facility, or a facility, I can tell you that. It's timing.
Looking forward to that, too.
Thank you, Linda.
All right.
We all thank you. We promised. We're going to skip recreation and go to, no, just kidding. Next one is 630 recreation. Mr. Roberts, you going to come up and join us or you going to sit in the back and criticize us?
Shy. Don't come later, Tom.
So do you guys want to tell us a little bit about new stuff that's going on there? I, I always love hearing the numbers of, of the number of programs you have and kids involved and all that sort of stuff. It's very impressive, so.
Sure. So the department's made up of four, we kind of look at it as four major areas, programming, lifeguards, fields, and most recently over the past few years, CPC projects. Programming, the highlights from last year, we had over 363 programs. We employed 155 seasonal employees, over 200 volunteers that gave back over 3,200 hours to the community. We had over 40,000 attendances, so that's each time somebody walks through the door and participates in one of our programs. All of that is self-supporting and paid for through the user fees and, so, and then another division of our programming that we're really proud of is the collaboration with the Chorus Foundation and all of our special needs programming. Then we have the lifeguards, as you know, we staff the five beaches and that's all paid for through the beach revolving account in the town. You guys have just named the beach commission that's getting up and running, so we're working with them. The fields, we are in charge of all the field permitting and for the town fields and the school fields. And that's been quite busy and will be busier and a little bit more challenging over the next couple of years. And the last 10, we've written 10, the recto commission has done 10 CPC grants totaling over $2.2 million.
Talk about our accomplishments a little bit. Last year, we, in co, in cooperation with the Harbor Mass that we put together and educated the community about the sharks and, and swimming with the sharks, we put together a, a protocol and it was ironic that we put it together and maybe about a week later, we had to put it in effect and it worked beautifully. I don't know, we didn't want to close the beaches for too long, so when a shark was sighted, this is how they followed it, and we have a, a protocol and it worked. I think the beach was closed for maybe maximum of 20 minutes and then we got it back up and running again. So that worked nice. What else did we do? We were, oh, last year we had a CPC grant given to us to restore our Mercury sailboats. That is our Learn to Sail program. And that's six of our sailboats and they are now in the process of almost half being done. I checked with them last month and it's being done by Situate Boat Works, so I can keep a close eye on them. And they're coming out beautiful, they're going to look almost brand new. I mean, they're 50-year boats, so, but they are going to look just about brand new and they should last another 40 years for us, hopefully. This year was the first year we entered into the Situate Regatta, which is put on through the Situate Yacht Club. And there's 73 other towns that are involved. We came in the middle of the pack. We came in the middle of the pack, we didn't go there to win, we just went there to participate, and we were very happy where we ranked. Another, let's see, another CPC project that was completed this year were the basketball courts at Wampe Tuck Elementary School, Cushing School, and finally, the one down in Hammerock. The Hammerock one was our final one, we're just ready to close it and wrap it up, I just, we're just in the process of ordering our waste, we have a waste basket, but we're gonna go with the ones that are put downtown, so they'll be green, and we're gonna go with the green. So that will be put in in March, we're just in that process. So that, we should be closing that up, and that will be done. Another, another thing that we did this year was the festival, which happened last week. I want to thank ECC, number one, for helping us, supporting us, they donated us money, and we are very thrilled, we work closely with them, and also other departments in this town, we blended together beautifully. I don't want to name them all, because I know I'll forget one, but everybody came together, and it was a great day. There was about estimated a thousand to fifteen-hundred people that showed up that day, we were happy with that, and God provided us with the snow the night before. So when you woke up the next morning, it looked like a winter wonderland, even though it was fifty-five degrees the day before. So the timing was perfect. One other thing we did in the summertime, we have a theme every summer. Our summer is, what, last year was celebrating everybody's differences, based on like a bullion, but we didn't want to call it bullion, and it's by wearing mismatched socks. And all our counselors and directors in the summertime were asked to wear mismatched socks just to celebrate differences, and I have them on today, so you get an idea, just so people will understand that not everybody is the same. Anything else, Melinda?
And then some of our challenges that are coming up, I guess our biggest one is that we're gonna be moving in ten weeks, we're moving direct department, the offices will be moving down to Jenkins School, and the plan, we're working closely with the principal and the school department on that, we actually met with Mrs. Arnold today, she's been great to work with, and yeah, that's...
Kevin Kelly and Bob Dylan.
Yep, Kevin Kelly and Bob Dylan. And it's, you know, the most important thing is to make sure that we can get there and keep our programming at the level that it's at now, and that we're up and running for the summer. We've, Maureen and I have been working closely on pulling the summer programming together, and it looks like there might be some things that we're not gonna be able to do this summer, because we won't have access to the high school campus, because it'll be under construction, but I would say ninety percent of that will be running.
What would those activities be?
The ones that are up here?
Yeah.
So, we're trying to relocate the ones that are even up here, but like Nautilus Mile and the high school crack. The biggest thing that we have to work with the school department on is exactly how the access, from what we understand, they're gonna maintain access to all of the athletic facilities, but it might be that you're parking over here, you're working there, so it might not be conducive to our program.
Sure, the children being dropped off, it would be, it would be hard to get them to the back of the school. The baseball program's another one, but we have other baseball fields that we're gonna be using.
Great. Any other questions from anyone before we go on the budget? Okay. So getting to the numbers, your budget this year is recommended at one-thirty-nine, last year it was one-thirty-five. It looks like there's very few joint expenses, maybe a thousand dollars of stuff that has moved to other departments. It's pretty level-funded, are there any, I don't think there's any new positions. So there's really nothing too, too interesting. The only thing I guess I would comment on is CPC, I know you've put another request in CPC for the boats?
Boats, yeah, four-twenty, for the four-twenty...
The four-twenty fleet dilapidated a little bit, we bought it eight years ago, and the normal lifespan of the four-twenty fleet is usually about four to five years. We also share them with the high school for their sailing team, so now they're double used, and they need to be replaced, so we have requested that.
Right. Shaun?
We got them used, right?
Yes.
I don't want people to think, yeah, I don't want people to think they were new four or five years ago.
We took very good care of them.
No, no, I'm just saying, it goes to show.
And actually, we were at that meeting, it's reasonable for the price, was there another one as well?
So we just put in the playgrounds, the playground grant that was granted six years ago is now coming to fruition, but it's been six years, and we're realizing that the costs have gone up. So there is another, we're meeting with CPC on the twenty-second to present that, the difference and...
And that's the playground in North Situate by the WPA building? Right. Which is really the replacement for seaside behind us. Great. Any questions for the budget? Seeing none, thank you very much.
Well done.
Thank you.
Chris? By the way, I was at Winter Festival, it was a great event.
I was.
It was, the snow worked out perfectly, and it was sledding, and other than a little bit of traffic, it was awesome.
You didn't get pulled over again, did you?
The next budget is one-seventy-five planning. Laura here?
Hello, how are you?
Hi, Tony, good evening.
Why don't you tell us a little bit about what's going on in planning?
Okay, I guess I'll run through the list of accomplishments over the past year and try to fill in maybe a little bit. Some of these come direct from the planning board, others came through the EDC to the planning board. The first one is that the planning board really got in-depth into the forty R district, and unfortunately, it was almost too popular, there were too many properties that wanted to get involved with it, and that pushed the sewer demand to a point where it looked like it was gonna be too great to be able to be justified or, you know, rationalized to do this. So that unfortunately didn't, didn't end up happening, but I think it was one of those things where if we hadn't investigated, people would have always been wondering, well, can't we do that, you know, and why can't we do it, and so on. And I think there's still potential to do it for a very small, on a very small basis, on one or two properties, but just not all of Green Bush. So we, we worked pretty hard on that, we completed a housing production plan, which is important for being able to deny forty Bs if you get to a certain point with your, with your housing production. So that was, you know, that was another piece. Planning was very involved with the Green Communities Grants. We started out, we were going to be using the eighty-nine thousand that we got just for the high-efficiency transformers for the sewer pumps, and it turns out, we used those for a variety of buildings, and a couple of the sewer pump stations, a couple of the wells, and the high school and the transfer station. We're getting ready now to apply for the next round of funds, and it'll probably be a similar amount, about, you know, eighty-nine, ninety thousand in that vicinity. Planning was very involved with the EDC, we wrote the RFQs for the wayfinding and the Economic Development Consulting Services, and we're gonna continue to be very involved with them as far as the wayfinding, getting some of those signs done and ready to be installed. There'll be a couple for some of the big municipal buildings. This is the format that they showed you, they had their consultant here with the branding, and it's kind of exciting to see that. I think it's gonna be something that's really gonna tie the town together in a nice way as far as, as design. We worked closely with Coastal, Coastal Resources on writing some grants, and in particular, on the Hazard Mitigation Plan, which is, you know, I'm sure that Nancy's gonna tell you a lot about that, but it's an absolute essential for the town to be able to get the FEMA grants to have this plan in place. So we're working hard to get that done in time, you know, in very good time for when it expires. We expect to have it done in the next, actually, the next couple of months. Then I was able to close out a couple of FEMA elevation grants from two thousand and twelve, and worked pretty closely with Nancy, who's now like completely up to speed, and more so with the elevation grants, and is doing a terrific job with those. We worked with the, with the local group that was working on the designation for the Mass Cultural Council District, to get Situate Harbor designated as the cultural district. So that was exciting, that that, that happened. And then number eight is probably key, we work very hard to support the planning board, I think it's, it's a terrific board right now, they're very thoughtful, they're very deliberate in their consideration of different conditions for development, and what to approve, what, you know, what not to approve. But right now, we have a number of developments that are all in the construction phase, we have Blanchard Farm, Studley Farm, Deer Common, White Ash Farm, over on Dreamwald Road, there's a small development, so those are all being built at the same time. So we do depend on the consulting engineers to go out and do a lot of the monitoring of the stormwater structures being put in, and the road construction and so on. But we also go out and, and look at properties, when there's a sign-off for the building department, we'll go out there and look at the grading, and just make sure that we're all in agreement that, you know, it's good to go for a building permit. So we do that, and all of the legal backup to the planning board that, you know, I know some of you know very, very well. We did some zoning this past year, we did a height and setback modification for the flood zone, where we increased the height limit, if somebody elevates their house, they're not gonna be, you know, bumping up against the height limit so much, and also, they're gonna be able to go into the side setback if they want to elevate their utilities. Then we have the development review team, some standard conditions that we did, we started work on the stormwater bylaw, and that's slated to come forward for town meeting, and, you know, we've had a little bit of disagreement along the way, which is what you would expect, because the developers want, you know, want it looser, the people that are charged with protecting the town's resources want it, you know, fairly tight, so I think we're in a pretty good place with it. You know, not everybody is totally happy, but that's kind of, you know, a good thing when you're trying to work out a compromise, I think, so. So we're working on that. We're gonna be working on the open space plan, which I'm hoping to get some money from MAPC to do that. That's something, you know, it just sounds like, you know, sweetness and light, the open space plan, but actually, it's something that also is required for grants for purchasing open space. If those purchases go through at town meeting, hopefully, we'll have the plan in place in time to get some grants for those, or for the next round, anyway.
Great. Any questions on, on that stuff?
No.
All right. Let's jump to the numbers. So your, your request was a hundred and fifty-seven thousand, the town administrator recommended one-forty, and last year it was one-seventy-three. And, I guess the big, the salaries, what happened on the salaries? That went down?
Coastal Resources had been partly funded from this department, and now she's in conservation.
Great. And then it looks like there was a request for twenty-one thousand dollars under technical services?
Yeah, that's, that was for assistance towards the open space plan, and also for doing a permitting guide, so if a business wanted to locate in Situate, they would have everything in one place, as far as all the licenses and all the permits that they need, when they need to go to conservation, you know, when they don't have to go to conservation, all of that information, we try to put it in one place. But the idea was, you know, we're kind of maxed out with, you know, our plate being pretty full, so the idea was to hire someone to do that.
Great.
So that's what the big delta is between twenty-one and seven, is keeping it internal instead of hiring out to do that?
Well, I'm not gonna promise that we're gonna be able to do it internal, I mean, we'll try, but that's, basically, we'll just push that down the road.
Great, those are the big differences, it looks like there's a few that were moved, legal advertising, did that go?
Your postage.
Yeah. Any other questions? All right, thank you.
If I may?
Yeah.
Amber, buying Kenny, Chris Rowe. As you know, I've been involved with planning since forever, either observing or being on and off of the board. And I really feel very strongly, and I realize that there is no money, we need more help in the planning office. With the amount of work, I mean, we've got, Laura has listed some of these items, hazardous mitigation, administering green communication, communities, staff support to EDC, administering contracts with consultants, the MBTA, positive train, control, placing towers, we have Toll Brothers that will be coming in, we have forty B with Livingstone, we have forty B with Stockbridge Road, we have a residential compound that will be coming in, we need to support the housing trust, Ingrid Lane has some contaminated soils, we just spent ninety minutes at the last planning board meeting dealing with stormwater, plus the planning office deals with complaints, and why did this happen, and why don't you do this, but the bottom line, gentlemen and ma'am, there's no time for enforcement, there really isn't, and that's the biggest complaint, that we can't enforce the bylaws, the rules and regulations that we have. There isn't enough time in the day to do what needs to be done. So whether it can be afforded this year, or it can be afforded next year, we really do need to have another person in planning. To ask two people to do all of this work is, it's, they do a beautiful job, they are wonderful to work with, and I couldn't support both people more. And I'm here more as a resident, as a voter, a taxpayer, and we get what we pay for, and we need the support at town hall. That's all I have to say.
And I can't believe I'm gonna say this, but I couldn't agree more with you. So certainly a thought that I've been talking about for a while, and certainly, I think, I'm not sure the rest of the board feels that, you know, but I think absolutely, it's a lot going on, a lot of development and growth in, in planning for the future, so absolutely.
And we have to take care of it, we have to manage it, we have to do it the best way possible, and in order to do that, we need more than two people, and continually going out, hiring consultants, and then following up what they may or may not be doing. Let's, let's be serious about this, and we have to put, put our money where it comes. And I think we really do need more help. Thank you.
Thanks, Laura.
Thank you.
Next item is Conservation and Coastal Resources? One-seventy-one.
Patrick, how are you? Nancy?
Good evening. Guys? So why don't you start us off by telling, you're doing so many things, there's not enough time to list them all, but why don't you do two or three, each of the main things that were, that people can, a couple have happened, and a couple that people can expect to see happen.
Okay. I think the biggest change this year is that Coastal Resources and Nancy's position came into conservation, so we're able to get at a lot more of the coastal issues that we weren't even able to touch before. I think from my side of things, numbers are up across the board as far as permit applications, septic's, enforcement actions have gone way up this year, we can't even keep up with the number of enforcements that, we're trying to take on a bunch of them and follow them through. We also have a lot of voluntary compliance now, more than we had in the past, we get people calling us up and saying, gee, can I do this, can I meet with you, and can we do something that may or may not require a permit? And that's a lot better way to come into contact with someone than somebody sending in a violation request to us and having us go out that way. I think the biggest thing this year, too, were the permitting and the public hearings for public safety building and for the school. There's a lot of working with the wetland scientists and the engineers, and we know we have a lot more projects coming along like that. The other thing is, we have a great commission to work with, they're all experienced, and I'm glad you were able to appoint them for extended terms. I think it takes them a while to learn what they need to do under conservation and under coastal, and they've been really good, they're following the rules, they're understanding, they're taking all the site visits, so it's been really helpful, and I can let Nancy give you an update on what she's been involved with.
Hi.
Hi.
So part of my charge is to do the administration and maintenance of the elevation grant program that Laura was alluding to. So we have fifteen projects underway, and we have three that are completed, two have got their reimbursements and are happy, and we have nine under construction, so if you're driving around the coast and you see an elevation project, it's probably being funded through the grant program. We have three currently pending approval to cover the whole fifteen of the gamut, so it's, it's exciting, and it's happy to see people doing what they need to do in order to protect their homes. We also had our five-year cycle visit for the CRS program back in the fall, their visit was November fourth, I remember it well. And so we also provided all the information from the building department, DPW, engineering, planning, conservation, and they were wonderful in helping gather the information and the documentation necessary over the past five years of this program. And so we should find out in March how we did, and hopefully, we stay in the game, or even do an improvement, which we really hope for, but to stay in will be just as delightful considering that the program had changed from a two thousand and seven guide to the two thousand and thirteen guide, and they would not review me on the two thousand and seven, even though I asked. They said no. So the other exciting thing that we're working on is assessing the coastline, that is underway, and I'm extremely excited to be working on this project. The assessment and the analysis is being done by the Applied Coastal Group, doing all of the latoral drift of the sand... would not review me on the 2007, even though I asked. They said no. So the other exciting thing that we're working on is assessing the coastline. That is underway, and I'm extremely excited to be working on this project. The assessment and the analysis is being done by the Applied Coastal Group, doing all of the latoral drift of the sand, the bentic profiling. It's what they've shown me so far, and we just recently had a check-in meeting, is amazing. The information that we're going to be gathering from this process will really help the community make some decisions. And we'll have a presentation to the selectmen, of course, and two public meetings, so there's a big public process part of that grant application. And that all has to be done by the end of June. So we're on the fast track to get that done, not only because the grant allows us to, but really we need the answers now. We need them now. So we're really pushing to get that completed, in hopes that things will come out from that that will help us. So let's see what else. I'll keep it short. So then Laura also mentioned the hazard mitigation plan, so she already mentioned it, but we also are having a public meeting on March 1st over at the JR Hall. And so, just to add another boost for the JR Hall, but we're having our meeting there from 6 to 8 on a Tuesday night. And that will be the final plan for people to comment on our actions that we're planning to push forward, and if they have any other actions that we may have forgotten or missed, then that would be a good time. So please come out. The more people that are involved, the better off the plan will be in all things that we do. If you don't comment on it at that time, it's five years before we get a chance to do it again. So this is a good time to give us your comments. So it should be good.
Any comments before we?
Lot going on.
Always.
Yeah.
I can attest to the liaison to both committees that those two committees, two offices are incredibly busy and do an incredible amount of work and follow through. Another area that is unfortunately short-staffed, only because of our limited revenues, not because we don't recognize the need.
Right.
They do a great job.
So the budget, the department requested $203,000. The town administrator recommended 172,000. Last year the budget was 128,000, but that's a little bit disproportionate because Nancy, now you're in that department. And the big, there's a few thousand expenses that have gone to another department, but the big difference was really the Technical Services. You requested $28,000 for something, and...
It was a body.
It was a body? So you requested $28,000 for a body, and it's not in the budget this year?
Right. Again, we're looking at enforcement and some follow-up type of work under certificates of compliance that we have to get for the state. So we're working within the budget.
Are you finding that there are more enforcement actions, Pat?
They've probably been out there in the past, and I think, once you get enforcement action, it may take six months or so to really work through all the hearings. But I mean, there's always been enforcement. I think we're making an effort to go after that because if people see that we're following up on enforcement actions, they're more apt to come in and get a permit rather than just do something. And there's some that go back several years, that they're in the process of remediation and mitigation, and they just take, well, this gets longer every month.
I think Pat has just done a superlative job. He inherited quite a bit, a couple of years maybe of stuff in old enforcement orders. He's also done a lot around educating folks with newspaper articles and things about just coming and asking first and simplifying a lot of processes to make homeowners want to ask. I think he's really to be commended. He works about 800 hours a week, and he doesn't go home when he's told, but I think the Conservation Commission under his tutelage is the best it's ever been.
Great. I didn't have any other questions. Anybody else have any other questions?
No.
Great. Well, we live in a seaside community, and you guys are always going to be busy, and we appreciate the hard work that you do and the dedication, again, and right, so thank you both.
The only other thing I want to say, and it sort of dovetails on Laura's budget too, is the hazard mitigation grant was not funded for next year, so we're looking at making up 35% of Nancy's salary in FY '17. So there's some method to the madness in the budget, unfortunately, but we're also looking forward because certainly in the short time she's been here, we can't afford to lose her, we don't want to lose her, but that's out there, and we want to make sure we have that 22,000, 23,000 in FY '17. That is going to be new revenue that we're going to have to do it. So she does a great job, but...
Right, definitely. And I think I can speak for everyone at the board, saying a lot of the departments need more hands. And I think Tricia's done a good job over the last five years of filling in some very important positions. Take your position, Nancy, in IT and other things. And it's hard under the budget constraints to get new people into it, and we're slowly moving in that direction, but we are certainly aware that all you guys work very hard and all could use additional resources, planning as well. Great, thank you guys very much. Next one is Board of Health, 510.
I don't know why that's there. Good evening.
510, sorry.
How are you, Jen?
Good, how are you?
Good, how are you?
Well.
Good. Why don't you give us a couple minutes overview of what you're doing and what you want to do, and then we'll dive into the numbers.
So similar to Conservation and others, our numbers are up in lots of areas, both permitting, inspections, enforcement, and related correspondence with folks on a variety of topics. There are several things that we're particularly proud of that we've been able to accomplish in the last year. Our public health nurse, she has held four free flu clinics, giving 400 free flu shots, both daytime, evening, and weekend to try to capture folks with varied schedules. We've hosted two nursing students that have been instrumental in providing public service announcements for the town on two very critical issues in the public health realm, one being tick-borne illness and Lyme disease in particular. Situate's reportable numbers are up, which probably means that our non-reportable numbers are also up in terms of tick-borne illness. So this nursing student created a local Situate-specific brochure, public service announcement with the health of John Roser and Situate Community TV, posters, and disseminated information to several departments as well as local businesses that would encounter folks who would be most exposed. They tried to capture golfers, dog walkers, et cetera, just to raise awareness that you can be exposed to tick-borne illnesses anywhere from your backyard to the golf course to even sometimes walking to and from the beach. So that was pretty successful for us in the spring. We continue to promote those activities each year. Our second nursing student worked cooperatively and was hosted by Situate Fax. She did a public service project and a community nursing project on Standing Order Narcan under the direct supervision of Amy G. So with the assistance of our public health nurse. So two very important programs that we've been able to run successfully this year. There's one upcoming that we are very excited about that I'd like to take the opportunity to tell you about. We have partnered with Dana Farber. They will be bringing a mobile mammogram van to Situate, and they'll be providing free screenings by appointment. We're just now working through the details and the advertisement. We're just getting the word out, but it will be occurring on April 7th. The van is run by Dana Farber personnel, they're radiologists, they're technicians, and the van will be located at Central Park. It's another free service, and it's a really exciting partnership that we're looking forward to providing. It's not income-based, it's only age-based in terms of breast cancer awareness. It doesn't have to be seniors, but we welcome anybody who meets the age criteria.
What is that age criteria, Jen?
We're still working out the specifics, and Eileen is calling, having a call with Dana Farber, but I believe that it's going to be women over 40.
Did you call up to get an appointment?
Yes. So we have the information posted on the Board of Health website and a couple of other avenues. The posters are actually on the ladies' room here and by the front door of Town Hall. You call Dana Farber directly to get your appointment. It's about 40 minutes. It's five minutes to check in, meet with the radiologist, and then 30 minutes for your exam, and then the results are going to be sent to your doctor of choice here.
When will you finalize that, Jen?
It should be finalized this week, the specific details. Eileen will be speaking with them tomorrow to get the final details.
Ruth, can you maybe make sure that gets into the Mariner? That's a great thing.
Jen, do they give you an idea, how many people would they be able to do in the course of that day on April 7th?
It's going to run from 8 to 3:30, so they anticipate 40 available slots.
Really? Okay.
That's phenomenal. That's great.
I think it's on Facebook, isn't it? Didn't I see it?
Yep.
Okay.
Great. Well, those are great services, and not all communities go and solicit them, so that's great that you did that. Any questions in terms of non-monetary stuff? Okay, so on your budget, last year you appropriated $136,000. This year you requested 179,000, and the town administrator recommended 179,000. And it seems it went up due to personnel change again? Is this Laura?
This is social services director.
So Laura Meneer moved to your department?
60% of her did.
60% of her, right? And what other things did I mark? Everything else was pretty level-funded.
Looks good.
So the increase was specifically 60% of the social services manager?
That's it.
Any questions from the board? Seeing none, thank you very much, Jen.
Thank you.
Thanks, Jen. See you.
And the next one is veterans. Number 543. Don, how are you?
Great. How are you, sir?
Want to give us a little bit of an overview of what you've accomplished and what your goals are, and give us some of the numbers of people who are helping?
Absolutely. So this year we had to complete the certification program for all the VSOs across the state. It started out, it was, they put in the budget for $350,000 to do this program. This is the first year. The first half of it was rolled out in July. It was like a kiosk, online, two-hour exam. You have to pass that, get the certificate, and then in October, when we have the annual training from the state, we went up and we took the second half. So that was complete in October, and I can say that Situate's all set. So basically that program is, again, if you do not pass the exam, the 75% reimbursement from the state drops to 50. And then you have, they give you another try basically to pass the exam to get up to par. If not, then...
Is the exam essentially you taking a test?
Yes. It's a two-hour, the first one's a two-hour open book, and then the second one is, they give you four hours. So it consists of 25 on the first one and 50 on the second one. So that's all completed. We don't have to do that again for another three years or until someone comes into this position. With that, what's been going on in the office is, we did an outreach on cable, and I can tell you right now, the traffic that's coming into the office, the telephone calls, it's been highly successful. And I think all the other departments have been using the PSAs, and I think it's really helpful. Again, with that, everyone should be having an appointment because it is getting very busy, but that's a good thing. We have a lot of fully developed claims coming in, and that takes a lot of time. We're doing them. We've been highly successful in getting the awards that we need. People are very satisfied with them. I'm seeing a lot of new faces coming in and finally putting in. With the veterans, their numbers are decreasing, but because of the WW2s passing on, but the Vietnam veterans are stepping up now, and we're starting to see them now. They're coming forward after all these years and putting in for what they deserve, and also with the women veterans too. So it's been, not a challenge, but it's been, just to get the people in on time and get the evidence in and go over all the forms, it's been time-consuming but rewarding. And again, I think with the phone calls and getting the feedback, it's, again, people really appreciate it. With Jean, our new assistant, she's coming up to speed also. I'm letting her take the exams too. She's passed the first one. And she just went to the training with us, which was, it's a schoolhouse setting, so it's basically the VSOs teaching the VSOs. So it's really successful training, and she got a lot out of that. So looking forward to her starting to step in on the fully developed claim process, so that should help a lot.
Great. And what about numbers? How many claims have we?
Fully developed claims, I don't keep track of. Basically what I do is, if I need to look at the numbers, I'll go to the state cherry sheets and see what's coming in to the town. It doesn't do it by name, but it does it by totals. And right now, I asked, at this last training, I asked for an updated cherry sheet for the town of Situate. They can't do a year stat. He can give me a monthly snapshot if I request it, so I did request one, just to see where we're at. So they're working on that, and hopefully that'll be something that will be more updated. But as far as the Chapter 115, we have, we should normally be, with our town, we should be normally around 24. We've had a couple deaths, people passing, two transfers going to live with relatives down the Cape, so we're down to 19. We have a couple applications in process right now, so I can see that moving back up again. But I would think that's going to normally be anywhere from 19 to 24.
Does their fiscal year run the same as ours, think?
The state's?
Yeah.
Yes.
We just lost two more.
Don, what about your claim cycle? You know, when do you sort of see, do you see a rush at the end of the fiscal year come through?
With that, what they did was, a year ago, they put out, if anyone came forward in this, they put out a year period, they would get retroed a year on their award. So I saw a big rush at the end of, it had to be by August 6th was the cutoff date. So I saw a big rush there. So we went through that, that period. So right now, it's just, again, with the outreach going, that people understand that they do have these benefits, they're going to come in and talk to me, and they might be going through hearing loss or something like that and don't realize that it was service-connected until they sit down with me and we talk through it. So now we're getting out, and so I'm starting to see a lot more of those. So I anticipate seeing a lot of that coming in the future, but we'll be able to handle it.
Anything else? So your budget last year was $211,000. This year you requested 216,000. The town administrator recommended 205,000. Essentially the difference was a $9,000 decrease in the support number from 129 to 120. It looks like we spent 110,000 two years ago. So I assume that's in the realm of what we should be able to...
We're still 5% over the most we've ever spent, which was in fiscal 14, which was the 114,000, and this year we're not even at 50%, and we've paid eight months' worth of benefits so far.
Does that go to free cash, or do we accrue that?
It would close out to free cash. We always encumber some just to make sure if someone comes later on in the year with some claims from the prior year, that Don has sufficient funds to reimburse that veteran.
Or if he has a denial and somebody appeals, then it's sort of like the tax abatement process, the overlay. We have to hold it in reserve.
Do we not deny many? Do we not deny many?
No, we've only had one.
We had one that was... Went through... I had to go all the way up to the Della. I went through the whole process. I took it myself, so...
And he prevailed, and saved us $27,000. But we had to encumber that money until... He did a great job on that.
Any questions? Great. Thanks, Don.
Thank you.
Thanks, Don. The next budget is cable TV, $159,000. Hey, Marty? Grab me water.
Two.
Two. John, how are you?
Good, thank you, Tony.
$159,000.
You better explain them.
So tell us what is going on in the cable world. I've already heard a lot of people speak.
What does that mean?
Great about the public service announcements and...
I just want to say one thing here. John, I've been looking for a movie for a long time. It showed up at Christmas time. It was the Lauren Hardy, and it was Babes in Toyland.
Yeah, March of the Wooden Soldiers.
Great. I just have to tell you, when I saw it on, and I was like, thinking of you and saying, this is such a great channel, so...
It is.
Can't find that too often.
Did you see the Mickey Mouse precursor in there? There's like a little mouse?
I don't want to...
All right. Okay.
Great on your break.
We'll talk about your movie selections.
Yeah, lots going on. We have... Last year was our best year so far. They get better every year. Lots of original programming, lots of town meetings. We record lots of town stuff. And, you know, I've called around, and not a lot of towns do that. We really stand out, us in Plymouth, as the ones that record the most, you know, kind of...
So what meetings are you doing now?
ZBA, planning, COA, ConCom, you guys, and one other one I can't think of. Health, Board of Health.
And school.
School meetings, community meetings, I mean, events and performances all the time.
But you do that, although it happens over there and goes on the other channel, you do all the...
That's right. It's all us TV. It's on Channel 22, but we... It's all us. Like, you know, Abby will record one of those and one of these and end up... But we also produce it as well. We take all the material and edit it and put it up there. So it's like all us. Yeah, so we've really been expanding in different directions, but all good things. Like Al Vanguard, I don't know if you've seen his thing. They always wanted to do that. That was an idea that came from citizens, and that is reflecting citizens in the community. And it's like, that's a great thing, because it really is interested citizens, which is really our mission statement, can get involved in community TV and show off their stuff and, you know, interviewing people here and working with all the departments here at the town, but also just, you know, citizens as well. Yeah, lots going on at the school, lots going on, some live TV. So, yeah, it's been a good year.
Great. Well, that's what our intent was many years ago, to get original programming in here and get the public involved in it. And it seems like we're getting to the point where, you know, it's, you know, taken up a majority of the time now.
It is. That's right, Tony. That's right. That was the idea the whole time.
And any one or two quick goals for this year?
Yeah, I think we're going to keep expanding on this, these original shows. We have a show called South Shore Style TV, which is like a kind of an idea where we talk to a lot of businesses and people in the area about what they do and the kind of style of Situate, reflecting that. Yeah, we've been involved with some of the serious things. There's a bill called 3898. We just actually went to the State House to record some testimony there on a bill that's been presented by Jim Cantwell to help fight substance abuse problems here. So some serious stuff, working with facts. That's something we want to expand on for sure. And, you know, just to continue to record more events, performances, we could spend a little bit of our Heritage Day's coverage. We've been doing some political stuff, too, the debates and being outside of the voting areas, like talking to people, and that's gone well. People like to be involved in that level. And so, yeah, just continue to evolve.
Good. Well, any questions for John?
No, I was just going to say, I mean, he's been doing an excellent job. I missed the beginning of it because I had to get you a water, but...
Thank you.
You're doing a great job, I mean, just since I've been here, really. What an improvement, John, seriously.
Thanks, Marty.
And John, also, I don't know, folks, we tape all the fire and police interviews because if there's a civil service appeal, tape is obviously... And he spends days doing that for us. We spend a whole day interviewing people, and he does all that as well, and creates the discs for us.
So your budget is, last year was $115,000. This year, you requested $123,000, and the town administrator recommended $127,000.
I like that.
Which must be a misprint. So there is...
He needed a new green screen.
I need a new green screen.
Came up after the budget was submitted, so I increased the line item.
What happened to the old one? I just saw it a couple weeks ago.
Well, the old one's cloth. You know, that's really just a cloth right there. You know, there's lots of things that go along with green screens, too, which is lighting and stuff that we just never had. I mean, we initially had the wall painted green. Do you remember that? It was like literally just painted green, and then we moved to the cloth. And now we're hopefully stepping up to... There's a lot of really interesting technology, CGI stuff, that is a really cool learning tool for kids and for people that are interested.
How many kids are actually in there learning this?
Lots of kids.
Give me a number.
Okay, so there are several classes at the high school that are involved, so that will be like thirty a class, like those three classes themselves, just coming through there. They get the actual, real studio, full-on thing. And then there's all kinds of classes that utilize the technology. I mean, there's like a journalism class, and a history class, and the film classes that come and utilize the resources. And then we have an internship program. And then Mr. Manieri started this career internship thing that's really cool. It's like an internship program for kids that actually puts them out in the field, and those guys come to us, too. You know, the Disney trip for the orchestra and the chorus, they asked me to tape that stuff and do that work, too. So I... The kids get... Lots and lots of students and citizens are exposed to it, and then ones that really are interested follow up with me. And that's typically how it kind of goes. But there's lots, hundreds.
Great. Any other questions for John?
No, but thank you.
Great. John, thank you very much.
Thanks.
Okay. So we are way past what we thought we'd do on this. We have one, two, three, four, five more, but they're all the town administrators' budgets. They're advisory, the reserve fund, workers' comp, unemployment, and disability, all which are pretty quick. But what we're going to do is, we're going to do them at the end of the meeting.
Good.
When... So everyone here doesn't have to sit here for another hour. So now we will move on to... Does anyone need... Everyone good? You need a water, Sean? Marty?
Oh, I'm good. Yeah. Thanks, Marty.
I thought you guys were going to split it.
There's a whole case of them there.
I'll share with you. So 7:30, we're going to discuss liquor license violation with Village Market. Jim McMinnis? Thanks for coming in.
How you doing?
Doing well.
That's good.
Do you want me to start, or do you want to start?
Depends what you have to say.
Well, nothing good. Obviously, you're here because you had a liquor violation in January, if I remember correctly.
January 7th.
And the hearing was, two weeks ago, a couple of your managers or assistant managers came in here to talk about it. It's the third violation, and it was a concern of ours, all of ours, and we wanted to make sure you went here so that we... You know that we're taking it seriously. Obviously, we took it seriously because you got hit with a pretty steep penalty. And, you know, really want to see what you're... What we're going to do to kind of stop this trend of getting, you know, getting the violations that you've had over... And granted, it's been a number of years, but still, one is too much, in our opinion. For me personally, the thing that concerned me the most was, and it may just have been them coming in and not you, was there was a month between the violation and you coming in here, and when I asked what was done, basically, they said nothing. So it was like you were waiting to come to us before you had to fix what I would hope you consider as a major problem. And then the other big problem I had was just how easy it was to break your system, that just anyone... Anyone could plug four numbers into a keypad and pass, you know, the security feature that you had in place. Those are the two things that stuck with me, and I think with the other board members as well, as they suggested the penalties that they did. So I'd like to hear from you, hear what you're going to do so we can curb this problem and move forward.
All right. Well, first of all, I want to apologize for missing the first meeting. I did, however, call the office, the selectmen's office, and asked to try and reschedule it, and I would be back. And they told me, basically, all I really needed to do was to bring in a representative, and that would suffice. I wanted to be here, couldn't do it. And again, I apologize for that, but there wasn't a chance to go ahead and reschedule. What I'd like to do is kind of, I watched on YouTube the meeting, and it was disturbing with some of the comments on my end. And I just would like to review our old policy and then go ahead into what we're doing now so everyone understands clearly what goes on in the store, because, again, when I watched the YouTube, I don't think anyone really knew what our actual policy is. We take it very, very seriously that we do not sell to minors. It's a number-one priority in the store. Every one of our cashiers are beaten over the head, okay, almost with a club, to get through to them on what the policy is. And the policy is this: If someone looks 50 years or younger, they get IDed. We have to see that ID. We punch... We take the ID, the license, we punch it into the system, what the birth date is, and it okay's us, or otherwise, we can't scan the product. If someone looks over 50, they don't have to ask for an ID. This situation that we had with this 18-year-old kid, who was a Situate resident, good kid, high school kid, smart kid, okay, good grades in school, once he went ahead and made this mistake, we brought him into the office, asked him what our policy was, he gave it verbatim. They have to look 50 or older. We asked him, why did you go ahead and sell to a... To the individual who was not even 20? He goes, we looked like he was 30. I said, you just quoted our policy, 50 or younger, that we have to ask for an ID. He said he didn't know. It was a human error, okay, on his part. Am I making that as an excuse? Absolutely not. There is no excuse ever to sell to a minor, okay? And it falls upon me, I'm the holder of the license, and it's unacceptable. I mean, as far as I'm concerned, the kid should have been arrested. He broke the law. He sold to a minor. I didn't sell to the minor. He did. And I'm going to get into this a little bit further here. If someone goes, a 16-year-old, which we have to have in our store, we can't hire all 21-years-old individuals. It's impossible. We have some day ladies that are 21, over 21, and there, it's kind of a no-brainer. And they follow the rules and regulations. 18, they're a little bit shaky, okay, but we stay on top of them. Now we have the situation of 16-year-olds. Our policy for a 16-year-old is, if someone comes through with liquor, they're not even to touch the bottle. They can't touch a six-pack. That's our policy. And it's the law, by the way. So what we do is, an 18-year-old or 21-year-old or the manager will come ahead, ask for an ID, punch it into the system. 16-year-old, he can't touch the alcohol. The 18-year-old or 21 scans it, and it gets bagged and put away to the customer. And that's our total policy. And we try and do that 100% of the time. And if any of you have shopped in the store, you see us doing it. We do it. We do it all the time, okay? What we've done is, we went down to Sand Hills, and we looked at their system, and it's called the Advanced ID Protection System. And basically, what that does is, it verifies the ID. Anybody can make an ID, I guess, nowadays. And what this does now is, it gives us another step. We're going to continue all those steps I had just talked about. In addition, we now take the license and we put it through the system every single time, regardless of age now. You could be 65 years old, we're going to ID you. We're going to take your ID. I had a guy walk out on me the other day, said he's never shopping in my store again. Never again. I said, hey, we got to do what we got to do, just like at a sports theater. And it gets now for a second, there's a second check. So now we're going to get at the fake IDs, and, which we really couldn't have done before, there was real no check for it, and it's another check that it's 21-years or older. Now, is there still room for everyone in there? Yes, there is. Is there still room for someone not to go ahead and follow policy? Yes, there is. And again, as far as I'm concerned, that person should be arrested, because we're doing everything we can to go ahead and make that happen. There were some insinuations at the last meeting that, you know, the Village Market really doesn't need a beer and wine license. Now, you didn't come out and say it, but there were insinuations by a couple of the selectmen, and that's how I interpreted it, and not only myself, but other people. And I got to tell you, I have to have a beer and wine license in that store to survive. My lease is $23,000 a month. It's almost $300,000 a year I pay in rent. I pay $30,000 a year in taxes. I pay $30,000 a year in liability insurance. That's never even getting into payroll, which is my number-one expense. We're a 1%, 2% operation in that store. We're not a Roche Brothers or a Starpen Shopper or Shaw's that makes millions of dollars. We don't make millions of dollars. There is in a charity that I turn down in this town. Not one charity have I ever turned down. I give to the Heritage Days, I give to the Little League, I give to Senior Night. There's a lot that I give to. And I know that's a little bit off the track here, but again, I have a point on the end. I'm one of the largest employers in Situate, for Situate residents. I know there are bigger companies than me, but as far as Situate residents go, I think I'm the largest employer of Situate residents in Situate. And I think that should hold some weight. And again, I had that beer and wine license for 15 years. Every time the Board of Selectmen have asked me to go ahead and close on St. Patty's Day for most of the day, I know there are other liquor stores in town that don't do it, or liquor store, I'm not sure how many, but I know I've done it every single time without hesitation, without hesitation, okay? I play by the game, okay? I don't try and break any rules, and we never have. To go ahead and be suspended after seven years, and I will make a little bit of a joke here, I mean, last time I was here, it was just about seven years ago. It wasn't four or five that was mentioned a couple of times at the meeting. It was six years and nine months, I believe. There were a couple of the selectmen that were here then, and I got to tell you, it was so long ago, you looked a lot younger. Joke. Okay? But I'm serious. It was seven years ago. I mean, how long does it have to go before we go ahead and... I know we can never get relieved and say, okay, fine. You know, if you have a... Well, actually, what happened last time was, we had a three-day suspension. We served one, and we had two. If we did well for a year and a half and didn't get another suspension, it was waived. So we didn't do well for seven years. We did well for seven years, almost, and now we get penalized another two days. I can't figure that one out. I mean, what if it went 25 years? Am I still going to get penalized? Again, I'm not making excuses, and I'm not saying that, you know, there's human error here. And it's not like I'm a guy trying to get an extra dollar selling a bottle of wine or a six-pack of beer here. That's not our intent. We're doing everything we can. We have signs now, when you walk inside the front door, first sign that says, you know, "We ID." We have signs hanging from the ceilings, "We ID."[1757.04] Uh, and, and they're in addition, we're, we're bringing more attention to it, okay? But we've gave it a lot of attention and we were really not getting credit for that. Which, that's how the last meeting sounded to me. Like we really didn't care. We do care and we do not sell to minors. Yes, we did in this one situation, but we do not sell to minors. We do not sell to, my 16-year-olds do not sell to 16-year-olds. With all of that, the 10 years, the 10-day suspension I feel was totally unfair. Totally unfair. And I talked to an attorney in Boston, okay, who specializes, okay, in suspensions, liquor, liquor suspensions. He's a big-time lawyer, okay, and that's what he does. I explained everything to him about the situation and he told me that three to five days would have been pretty harsh. He said seven would have been like crazy. He goes, they're really going for your throat. But to get 10, he said it was ridiculous, and I agree with him. And I just wanted to give you my opinion on that. And it's already been done and it's there and we're gonna continue to work hard and we do not want another suspension, okay? And you gotta believe me that when I say that it's a number one priority in the store, it's a number one priority in the store. There is nothing else more important, okay? And it's monitored regularly, just slipped through the cracks and quite frankly, you know, I, I said it before and I'll say it again, that kid broke the law. Okay? And in my opinion, we should've called the police down and he should've been arrested. I know that sounds extreme, but you guys are being pretty extreme with me. Okay? And, uh, our business is a 1%, 2% profit margin business. You know, and, uh, and I think we're pretty good to the community, okay? And I don't feel that the selectmen will fare with me and my business. And I just wanted to make that statement. I'm done.
Well, I'll tell you what I think and then I'll open up to you guys. It sounds like you are making excuses. Just because you hire employees in here and just cause your business only makes 1% or 2%, and you wanna arrest the kid that did it, it sounds like you're pushing the blame a little bit away from yourself instead of getting your systems in place so this can't happen. And you may want to have a liquor license in this town because you want to sell liquor, but you don't have to have one. And the only way you're gonna have one is if you can get this system downright. And that's, that's the way we feel. And, you know, I appreciate all you do for the community and I think you do a great job. I do not think, I've been in your store a number of times and I do not think you have a strict policy there. I've never been carded and I look well under 50. So I think you've gotta get your systems in place. If, if anyone can just key in four digits into a keypad and get it through, I guarantee you that kid was not the first one that got served there. I guarantee you. And I think Marty mentioned it as well, um, you know, we've all been in there and seen situations where we haven't been carded. So, I, I don't like the fact, I, I appreciate it, I think it was a strict penalty, I think it could've been more by the guidelines, I think we read the guidelines, you could've lost your license. We are looking at the guidelines a little bit closer to see what's fair and what's not fair, to see if we can get a stricter policy in place. But I think you have to take responsibility for this and not say we should've arrested this kid. The kid never should've been able to do it.
I said I take full responsibility.
Right. And I think if you were here to talk about it instead of having two people here that really were just sitting here to get, really didn't have a lot to add, um, you know, it may have made a bit of a difference in what was going on here, but, but, you know, all those other things that you mentioned in your little thing, it really doesn't have anything to do with whether you get a liquor license in this town or not. You know, the only thing that does is you're not serving minors. That's it. You know, all the other stuff is great, you know, and I think it's a great for the community that way, but it doesn't, it doesn't, that doesn't, um, allow you the right to have a liquor license because you donate to charities. You know, that's, that's my opinion. And, and I'm glad you're getting that, that system. I think it will work. I think it's working at the other stores and I think, you know, getting the right people, I think Marty had a great idea where he said, just get it out of those, the hands of those people that are gonna be tempted to give it to their friends and give it to people, you know? Any way you can do that is gonna, to help, help you out in the long run. And I don't think we've done a lot of stings in the last seven years. I think, I can't think of one that we've done since that one.
He said there had been one since 2014.
We do them quite often though. I believe they do it like once every, uh, a year, a year and a few months.
You said 2014.
Yeah, the ABCC did one, we didn't do one. But anyways, that, that's my two cents. I don't know if anyone else wants to add anything.
Just, I do, just, I wish you were there. I wish you were here the night that we did it, Jim. It may have had a, a little bit of an impact. I mean, I, my, my thing is I shop at the Village Market almost every day. The only issue that I saw is that sometimes when they're, you know, around dinnertime, I mean, it's just like the lines are going, 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 and I do see one person trying to go through and look and scan and, but I just think that when you get that busy and you're waiting on four different people, that it's bound to have a mistake. That's why my suggestion was that, you know, it's, it's your business, again. I know you rely on the beer and wine, I know you do. There isn't any doubt in my mind. But if there's a way that we can control it so that, obviously for your own well-being, so that, you know, when it, when it does come time for somebody to be buying, if it's limited to a couple of different lines, and I know you have to have 16-year-olds working there, but you can't have all 18, 21s. But if there's a, if there's something you could do, just, just to sort of ensure that, you know, as somebody is going through, that if they, if that age thing comes into play, um, I know I probably look a little older than Tony, but I've never been carded in there either.
A little?
You know?
What?
Anyway, um, but that, that's the only thing I wanted to add. I wish you were here that night, um, and, you know, I, I don't know if you said you're gonna get that machine?
Well, then we have it. It's been installed as of last Friday.
And there's no, then there shouldn't be any further issues there.
And just to add, if you had come in at that night and said, we bought the machine last week, it's in place, it's foolproof, we're going on, I guarantee you the sense of the board would've been a lot different. That wasn't the sense we got at the meeting.
Well, plus what you, everything you've said tonight's had an impact, I'm sure.
There's one other thing too that I forgot to mention, we are gonna do our own stings.
Good.
You know, we're gonna, uh, try and do two a week.
Good.
Um, at least two a week, where I have friends, relatives, neighbors, um, uh, to come in and shop the store and they better be ID'd or that cashier's gonna be in big trouble. And our policy again now is, everyone gets ID'd. Okay? So you will be ID'd in the future.
Perfect.
Any other comments or?
I was just gonna say, Jim, the one question that I never got an answer on was, when the date of birth is typed into the machine, does that get, aside from being able to scan the item, does that get recorded? You can identify that number?
Yes.
Now, the reason I say that is that, um, uh, last week, the son's father came and visited me, cause he was pretty irate about the insinuation about his son in the newspaper. And so, what he told me, and which you can verify, is that 1145 was punched in by him on a regular basis. And that all the kids down there who, who worked there were kind of encouraged to make sure to move the product and not have the lines, that each kid has their own numbers and they punch it in all the time. So I think some self-reflection, you can easily identify that, you know, nobody's typing in their date of birth if they're doing it. And if they are, they're typing in one number. So that's what he said, I don't have proof of it. You would know, both of you know, and you can figure that out pretty quickly. That being said, um, you know, obviously from our perspective, you know, you've done great things, no doubt about that, mitigating certain things, you know, with what you've done for the store, for the community. I shop there all the time. Everybody shops there, I mean, for the board. But, our duty is to the public and it is for the underage kids and for people, um, for drinking. And I'm not suggesting that your store is selling to minors. It's, that's what the sting is really for, to try to find out what are the mechanisms. So I'm not trying to suggest that at all, but obviously in the past, there's been a huge problem with drinking with minors. And so, that's our obligation. You, you're right, it's the third time you've gotten hit. And we came down hard because we don't wanna see you fourth. And based on what you've put together and what you're going forward, I suspect that probably we won't see you again. But that's our duty to make sure that it doesn't happen again. So I mean, I realize you think it's unfair. I don't see that. I think maybe it was a wake-up call to make sure that this doesn't happen again with the Situate Market. That's my hope.
To answer your question, um, I already spoke to Annie who was here and asked her to go ahead and go through and look at those, um, uh, because we can, we can collect that data.
Good.
And, and we're, we're looking into that and, uh, and we're checking the cashiers to see if there's any consistency with them doing that. So, uh, that's in play, they're researching that now.
Good. That's, that's all I have to say.
Sean?
Yeah, Jim, I, you know, I stood, stand behind what I said two weeks ago. I was very upset you weren't here. I think I said, maybe you should've changed to vacation. I might've. You chose to be in that business. That's a difficult business, not new to you. You have a, a store in West Roxbury or, you know, somewhere else, so you, you know this business. You know the margins in beer and wine. You know the risks and certainly don't have to tell you about your, your staff. It's a lot of times, it's their first job, you know, 16-years-old. You do a great thing for the community, I think that's important too. I've said it many times, you give up your parking lot for the St. Patrick's Day Parade and the list goes on, Heritage Days and, and on and on. You're very important to this community. And I did say that, you know, growing up in this town, that was supermarket that didn't sell beer and wine. Maybe you didn't have to, you know? I don't wanna see you not do it, you know, that, that's for sure. But like we've said, we, you know, we all have children that have grown up and we, the last thing any of us wants to see is an accident. And I think that's what Tony was really trying to drive home. You know, I went to the Sand Hills store and that was new to him. He's a, he's a painter, he's a commercial painter and he made that investment and I showed him the license and if your staff just asks for the license, everything else is off the table, as I understand it. It takes all the guesswork out of it, the best artist can alter that license and it's gonna, you know? Then, if something like that happened, I'd be the first one to say, you know what? Cause I know, if, if you did the right thing, you asked for the license and, and it, and it made it through the system, you know, you're off the hook, in my opinion, you know? It's just like a bartender at a restaurant, you know? That's apples and oranges. But I just wanted to, you know, it, it upset me, I was on the board for the first violations and you're in a tough business, you know, and I, and I grant you that. I just wanted to speak, cause you're here and I wanted to repeat what I said and, like Tony said, if you had said things a little different and you were here, maybe I would've changed my mind, you know, had a different outlook. But I know it's difficult. I know the, the season from Labor Day to Memorial Day is long in the town of Situate. You know, to tell me that and, uh, you know, I wish you the best.
Okay. Great, thanks for coming in.
All right, thank you.
Good lecture.
All right. Moving on to interviews for boards and committee applicants. First one is Veterans Advisory Council, Ed Kelly. Mr. Kelly, how are you?
I'm just fine, how are you?
Great. So tell us why you wanna be involved in the Veterans Advisory Council.
That's a good question.
You've been walking in the hallway for two hours and you haven't thought that one was coming. I'll tell you what, the next people that are up, Diane and Danielle?
Do I have to answer that?
I get the same question.
Okay. Uh, well, I, I heard through sources in town that the committee was short one person and I, being a veteran myself, the Navy back in the old days, thought, what the heck? Maybe I could fill that spot and help them out and that's pretty much why I'm doing it.
Great. I think we definitely need somebody there. I think you bring energy to everything that you do and I think.
I can't believe you're in the Navy.
A good addition. Sean, did you wanna make a motion?
To the Board appoint Edward B. Kelly to the Veterans Advisory Council for a term of three years or until a successor is named.
I'll second that.
Second by Mr. Danny, further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, unanimous, thank you for.
Changes of minds.
Thank you for participating.
All right. Just, just four to the square.
Four zero.
Fine.
We don't have any quarters.
You have to say.
Yep. Diane Davis. How are you Diane?
Great Diane, so are you.
Great. Anything you wanna say?
Want me to answer the same question? Okay, it's pretty simple. I love this town, specifically I love her beaches. I have been a lifelong resident of Situate, um, which is only like 29-years. But I specifically love Hummerock. Um, I'm the former or past president of the Hummerock Beach Improvement Association. And in that position, I often heard the comment that Hummerock is Situate's forgotten little brother and I, I think that's just not a fair statement. I think that in my position, I worked a lot with the residents and my neighbors, to say that we had to have more of an active voice. And I think that that's what's missing for Hummerock, is we don't have an active voice here. So I'm hoping to be that active voice and to be sort of a liaison between Situate proper and Hummerock. So that's one of the reasons I'm here.
Great answer. So, um, great, and this is a newly formed committee, obviously, and it needs, I think someone just resigned and we have an open spot on it, so it's perfect timing.
Do we have two spots or one spot?
I think we can go, I think we have four on it right now and we can go anywhere from five to seven.
Yep, that's correct.
Okay, so, good.
So, but we don't, we need one to have a quorum for the meeting, so.
I can speak on behalf of Diane, I've worked with her for years in various organizations as our kids grew up and she's dedicated, organized, and I only ask that you have a global view of all the beaches, but also represent Hummerock's interests.
I was going to say, I spent much of my, um, misspent youth on all the beaches of Situate, not just Hummerock, but I have a special focus of Hummerock, but all the beaches.
And then I, go ahead, John.
I was gonna say, it's a great committee, I think it's so much potential, um, and so much, not just for Hummerock, but also, you know, Fourth Cliff, you know, you look at the naval base there, with the opportunity of maybe trying to partnership with them just for Situate residents, I'm like, you know, there's so many, I say not so many beaches, beaches are at a, a limit and I'm like, you know, the opportunity to utilize another area that, for residents' benefits would be huge, so, um, it's a great committee. So, I wish you well in it.
Thank you. Any other questions?
Diane and I have been friends for a number of years and.
Under 29.
Her energy, yeah. Five years now. Her energy level is incredible, so I think it's, it would be a great fit.
Before it was 50. Yeah. His age goes a little bit.
Great. Well, thank you for, for offering to be part of it and, um, we're gonna vote on it. Um, I think there's another candidate also that we'll listen to and then we'll vote on that committee by the end of the meeting. And, great, thank you.
Thanks.
Danielle? Any guests?
I have the copies of my resume, I wasn't sure if I were.
Sure. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
What's not outlined on there is my current job, I do behavioral therapy with children with autism. I work in the whole Lower South Shore area, so everywhere from Braintree to Plymouth. I'm working in-home with the families, so I'm very connected in the community. And I also, my family has a property management business that they have property from Hummerock up to Alston and Brighton, so I'm in there a couple of times a week, helping them with business organization and managing the properties. And, um, so again, very connected with the communities there as well. I grew up on Hummerock, I, and on Situate beaches, I love them, it's my happy place. I've traveled a lot, um, around the world, I've lived in a few different places and it always brings me home. I stand by that water every day and it just makes my heart happy and, um, that's why I'm here. I wanna make a difference for Situate beaches, I've spent a lot of time volunteering in a lot of different places and I love making a difference, I have a passion for leaving a mark and leaving things better than I found them and I, uh, my biggest accomplishment them and I, my biggest accomplishment was a community project that I led with a team of five other people in Raleigh, North Carolina. We, it used to be an orphanage, now a school for financially and physically handicapped children. We took their playground and completely revamped it in two days. It was a $35,000 project that we got completely donated, none of our own money, and in the two days, there was over 100 volunteers that came and did the work. And so it left a mark and it was also one of the things that made me want to come home and leave my mark here. And I do a lot of different volunteering. I volunteered with Children's Hospital in Boston and also with some local homeless shelters just to make that mark. And I really feel like this is the place for me with the Situate Beach Commission to continue to make that mark. And my experience in leadership from the program that I went through, but also my managing and event coordinating experience, I'm not nervous at all.
No.
Has given me the, has accentuated my abilities to bring people together and organize events that really inspire people. And I've been doing that for a long time as well and it really makes me happy to see people making memories. And I can just see that on the beach, you know, bringing people together to clean it up or, you know, community walks. I've done a lot of different volunteering things with, you know, 5Ks and things like that. And I think there's a lot of room here to inspire people. I'm committed to be an advocate for Situate and their people, for our beaches. And I think that my experience in bringing people together and making things happen really is going to accentuate that. And my confident, I'm confident that not only am I going to be the space for people to be heard, but also my problem solving and skills and my experience is what's going to make the big difference in the long run.
Do you live in Hummerock now?
Yes, I do.
So you live at 15 Hawthorne?
Yes, I do.
Right. And you know, like Maura was saying before, that the commission or the committee is to look at all the beaches.
All the beaches.
And find out, but find improvements for each one of them, you know.
Absolutely.
It could be big picture stuff. It could be little picture stuff. So we're really looking for, to get a different perspective from people in terms of how they think the beaches can be improved. So, so it kind of fits up both of your alleys in terms of what you do.
Absolutely.
Any questions?
No.
If you have some dynamic skill set, that'll be really helpful to all the other folks that are on the commission with the passion.
It sounds like we're, are there a lot of Hummerock people on that? Who are the other four people?
I don't think so.
Just one other. Okay. Great. Not that, that's neither, neither good nor bad. Yeah.
I think it's great.
That's great.
That's great.
Great. So thank you very much. Do you guys want to, so right now, there's four people on the, on the committee and we can go up to seven. So there are room for two spots, although when you have an even number, sometimes voting is.
I'm happy to make a motion.
The board wants to make a motion.
Is everyone ready to vote on these?
Yeah.
You want to make a motion?
Yep.
Maura?
I move to appoint Danielle M. Thalias and Diane Davis to the Situate Beach Commission.
Second.
For which term?
Which terms?
Are there two different terms?
Do you have to do them two separate? I want to stagger them.
Maura's nervous too.
They're staggering.
No, I didn't know there were two different terms.
There are, there's one two-year term available or two one-year terms available.
Two.
So you can point both of them to one year or you can point one to two, one to one.
Why don't we just do both to one for now to make it easy instead of having to decide?
That all right with you?
Unless you have a preference.
Do one of them as a two. Then we don't have to, I mean, we just.
Make Diane one, Danielle two.
Okay. I move to appoint Danielle Thalias to the two-year term for the Situate Beach.
Second.
Second by Mr. Tool. Further discussion? Seeing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Two years for Danielle. Maura?
Move to.
Marty?
Appoint Diane Davis to a one-year term of the Situate Beach Commission.
Second.
Second by Ms. Kern. Further discussion? Seeing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. It's unanimous. Five to zero. Thank you both very much. Who's the chair of that? Do we have a chair yet?
Nancy Faye.
Nancy Faye.
What?
You guys know Nancy Faye?
No.
Okay. Well, she'll get in touch, she'll get in touch with you and, great. Thank you both very much. Lorraine, I just wanted to mention, we passed Ed Kelly also and that was four zero and Marty abstained.
Okay, good.
Great. Moving right along.
Thank you.
Thanks. We have a special event application. Discussion vote for St. Patrick's Day Parade. Mr. Kelly?
How are you? I'm much better than I was last time.
Good.
The teacher wants me out.
So what's this parade thing?
What's this parade thing?
Are we having it?
If we can get enough money to pay for it, we're going to have it. But we're working on it right now.
Don't pressure Tony.
What's the code update for the fundraising, you know, for you to determine whether you're having it or not?
What day's the parade?
I'll have a good idea probably by the end of the month. End of this, yeah. I mean, I think we're heading in the right direction. We got a late start this year because of the confusion with who was going to be the host sponsor. And just so those that are watching tonight know that the host sponsor is the Situate Harbor Merchants Association, a business association. They took it over from the chamber. But they are not paying for the event. They are just the organization that we use that sponsors can write their checks to and then they get to use it for a tax deduction. So we still need the businesses and come corporate sponsors and the general public that enjoys doing the parade to help us out with a donation, taking the Bernie Sanders approach that if a lot of people give a little, we can cover this no problem. So we have the ability to take donations online at weloveaparade.com and it's starting to work because we're getting the word out through the press and on the radio. So if that continues, we should be in good shape as long as people don't assume that, okay, that they think they're going to do it, they're going to do it. And then they don't give. So if everybody just stays on the bandwagon, so to speak, I think we'll be able to pull it off, so.
I love that barometer you have.
You like that, huh?
That's new, right?
Yes, we just put that up, yeah. So we can keep people abreast of how far we're getting with the fundraising, so.
Great. So on, in terms of the application, we got feedback from all the department heads. You know, parking is the one thing that comes up occasionally with the, with the police. I think you've done enough to know how that goes. And then, of course, the health stuff with all the food vendors, you take care of that.
Right.
Good. So it's safe to say, you're trying as hard as you can to get this parade to go and you need donations. So.
Correct.
Anyone that's watching, if you can donate a little bit, vote for a mayor, do all this sort of stuff to help, help the cause.
Yeah, I mean, the fundraising events that we have, the mayor of the parade competition that we have usually raises a good chunk of change for us. And I thank those people that put themselves out there to, you know, in the limelight and asking money. That helps take a little pressure off of the parade committee. So that plus our Mad Hatter's Ball, which is on March 12th at the Barker Tavern. And, you know, the community, when it was first put out there that there was a potential that there might not be a parade, there was a lot of social media chatter about, oh, you know, what can we do? What can we do? Well, what you can do is you can go online and make a donation or you can attend the events that we have going on to help support the parade. So those would be two really good areas to help out, so.
I know with the money being kind of up in the air, have you attempted to try to tell the candidates to, you know, turn over the money that they're making as opposed to holding back till the end?
Well.
That's one of the things.
Yeah, I mean, I, I have a hold on what they normally have holding back because it is a competition, obviously. So I, I will know, nobody else will know how much we got coming in per se. So.
She ran for it.
So, yeah, Diane is, Diane actually is a past mayor.
I held my ever.
Diane raised over $15,000 one year.
I think, right?
Yep. She did good for us.
Right.
So.
Great. I was going to ask, Ed, if you don't, did you have a drop dead deadline or an amount? And if you don't, could you just scale it back?
Well, that's what will end up, that's basically what will happen is if, if.
That's exciting.
What I've, what I've done is I have a number of the groups that perform with us on the hold, so to speak. They're committed to coming here, but I've told them that I have, I won't commit to them until I know I have enough money to pay them. So we basically will have a basis of a parade. How big it'll be will be depending on how the fundraising goes and how many corporate sponsors we have.
And I'm just going to, you know, give you a little plug here. Ed, I think, told some of these bands that they might not, might not have the funding and they still want to come here versus elsewhere the same day.
Yes, yeah.
Probably in part because of everything you do.
Well, they just love the community. They love coming down here because it is a family-oriented parade and they love the, just the crowds. Yeah. A few of them said they'll take less money to come here than go somewhere else. So.
Motion?
Please.
Move to approve the, a special events permit to Ed Kelly slash Harbor Business.
Situate Harbor Business Association.
Situate Harbor.
Business Association.
For the St. Patrick's Day Parade, March 20th, 2016, from 1:00 PM to 3:00 PM, pending the Board of Health approval. Do you, it says 1:00 AM.
Oh.
It's P.
We're going to start the parade early this year.
But you set up though.
It's going to be a real long one.
Your setup though, it's usually a setup before 1:00.
Yeah, we start setting up around 10:03 in the morning at the Gate School and we try to kick off right at 1:00 and.
Why don't I just, I'm, I'm just want to.
Do we have to cover the setup?
Yeah. I'm just going to make it from 10. Make, make the.
Say, make it 10 to 4 because by the time they break up at the other end.
All right. That's why I asked.
Yeah.
Figured 1:00 in the morning, you guys are out there.
Yeah, right.
Second?
Second.
Ms. Kern, second. Further discussion? Seeing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. It is four to zero. Thank you.
All right, gentlemen.
Thank you so much.
See you. The next discussion vote is for another event, the Fashion Truck Festival. Carla Nee. How are you?
I'm good. How are you?
I'm well. So tell me a little bit about your Fashion Truck Festival.
Basically, I'd like to talk about what a fashion truck is. It's, it's a spinoff of the food truck fad that's going on right now. A lot of, a lot of retail vendors, instead of spending money on their brick and mortar businesses, they're finding that they can save money if they transform the back of a box truck or a vintage trailer or something like that into a little mobile boutique. So the issue with that is wherever they decide to market their ware or where they decide to sell their wares, they have to ask for permission to park there from the owner of the property. That's where I come into play. I'm, I'm an experienced event coordinator. I work with the Food Truck Festivals of America and coordinate their, their artist events. And I, I saw this coming. It's becoming, it's becoming a new fad. It's almost replacing the food truck festivals. It just hasn't been done yet. And I recently saw that the Situate Harbor has lost a few businesses recently. I'd like to contribute to the community by bringing in traffic. I grew up in Situate, went to, went through the whole school system and I just recently moved back and my family, it's a founding family. So I just want to, I want to basically add to the community what it, the way it has already grown, where it's gone from, say, the few St. Patrick's Day Parades it used to have to this one major St. Patrick's Day Parade that almost rivals the Boston one. Heritage Days has grown tremendously. People go there just to, you know, just to spot a celebrity. I want this to add to that. It's going to be a bare bones event where it's just the fashion trucks. I'm not going to have any food vendors, no food trucks because I want to bring that business to the local merchants and the local restaurants.
So describe what it actually is. So there's going to be 10 trucks that are designed that sell clothes out of the back of their truck? Is that?
Yep, pretty much. They open up the.
Pictures?
Oh.
Just pictures, different positions, but it's by this side.
Oh.
We have a video.
Yeah. Thank you.
Oh, it's on the back.
It's like the last.
Yeah, it's in the, I see it.
Got you.
I'm doing a look at that.
So it's a one-day event?
It's a one-day event.
How many trucks are there going to be?
It depends on how many applicants I receive. I'm going to limit it to 15. They're just going to park right in the parking spaces on that diagram that I, the diagrams that I provided. Parkway. So, sorry?
They're all various sizes.
They are various sizes, but they all should, I mean, each one should fit into a parking space. I would space them, every other parking space. And.
So just where's the, so I'm looking at your parking lot. Is it in the furthest back? If I'm walking out of Rocco, is far back right by the, to the right of the bandstand? Is that over by the pier?
The original applica, the original application that I had submitted was back by the bandstand. After meeting with the Situate Police Department, we decided that we were going, that it would be better to do it actually within the parking spaces across from where the, where the bank is. We wouldn't take up all the parking spaces. We would leave spaces available for, for their customers and we would block it up with barricades.
Does anyone know where this is?
Can I ask a question, Tony?
Where in the, where's, where are these spots?
Well, these aren't the spots. You're saying that these parts, these spots are not the ones that you're currently.
No, those, those ones that you do have are, that's not the original application.
If you're trying to save.
Yes.
On the backside of it.
Towards the water. They're going to be the spaces closest to the water in, in those rows.
Right. No, mine, mine was a date. What was the date?
June 11th.
What day is that?
Yeah.
It's a Saturday.
This thing's throwing me off, that ladder.
Just about the boaters and it's what, one, two, what, you need it for the day?
Yes.
June 10th for the day.
It's already been approved.
Oh, June 11th.
I, but in all defense, he's still feeling new, you know, and.
I know.
Yeah. I think it's great. I just, if, if it's, you know, June, well, the Marines open up, I think, May 15th.
So this is the water?
To be sure.
It's that back corner.
On the weather.
The landing.
What time would you be needing this space in the district? You say the event runs from 1:00 to 7:00?
The event runs from 1:00 to 7:00. I did provide a run sheet of setup times as well. I believe I'm having a staff meeting at 10:30 where we'll go around and we'll place the barricades around, around the parking spaces at that time. I would like to have the barricades delivered the night before and we will put them in place early in the morning or in the morning.
So it's no food, just retail?
Bare bones, just trucks and retail. I want.
And have you gotten any feedback from the merchants?
I did. I.
You sent the application to Paul Cookstis.
Yep. I spoke to Paul Cookstis. He met, he brought, he brought a letter that I wrote to the Harbor Business Association. They basically gave me their bussing. And a lot of them, he said, are interested in participating somehow, but I am going to keep it, I'm going to keep it as bare bones as possible. I'm hoping maybe the restaurants will do, I don't know, some sort of promotion on that, like a special on their menu or something for that day. Not really looking for any, any crazy amount of support from them. It's the first, it's the first one. I want to do it right the first time around. Take it, take it from here.
Any questions?
No. I think it's a really interesting concept.
Yeah, I mean, as long as the merchants are in it because they're, they're, they could feel the competition, you know, if you, if you get five clothing stores and the clothing store in the harbors.
Right. And I, I did contact Sylvia from Sylvia's By the Sea. I know she just released a clothing line. I invited her to join us. I work with her on another property as well. I, well, I work with her at a, I work at the Pine Hills. She has a shop at the Pine Hills and I'd like to keep a good relationship with her. So.
I think the more, the better. You know, like restaurants, you know, they're just bringing more people because no two things are exactly alike probably. My only concern is the, the people that pay for the slips for the boats and, you know, yeah, my blessing.
It's June 11th.
So it's going here.
All right. Okay. Just that, that's all. I mean, it's, you know, it's Heritage Days.
When is it?
It's the carnival.
June 11th.
10 through 11.
June 11th?
Yeah.
So it's just a one-day event?
It's just a one-day event. It's easy to set up and break down because they're just driving away.
They would just say 10 trucks.
I'm going to max it out at 15.
Okay.
And the hours are 1 to 7?
Uh, the event hours are 1 to 7.
I'm with Tony. As long as the Harbor Business Association, they're a blessing. I think that's important.
Hey, I think it's something new and unique. We've got the cultural arts district. I mean, I think, I don't know of any other town doing this. I, you'd know better than us, but I mean, I think it's just.
It hasn't really been done in Massachusetts at all.
Don't tell my wife about it. That's all I can say. She'll be there.
Frank, just in time.
They've had trucks at.
Female clothing or is there any ma, are there any male?
Um, it depends on who comes. There are some trucks in.
Make sure we, you know, outfit the board. So they have options down there.
There are some trucks in New York that cater to men.
I guess so.
And I'm hoping to get them in. I, I recently had an application from someone in New Jersey for another event I'm doing. I'm trying to bring her on board for this one.
Good.
So.
Motion?
Yeah, please. Good luck.
All right. I'll move to approve a special events permit for the Fashion Truck Festival, June 11th, 2016, from 1:00 PM until 7:00 PM, pending the Board of Health approval.
Second.
Second by Mr. Harris. Further discussion? Anyone out the TV land? Nope.
Why, why do you want it from 1? Why, if it's Saturday, wouldn't you want to?
When do you want to set up?
Wouldn't you really want to get started earlier?
What time did you want to set up?
The setup time, I believe, I said 11.
So I'll move to amend that motion to reflect at 11 o'clock then.
Okay.
I'll clean up.
Clean up. We should be out of there by 8:00 PM, cleanup and all.
From 1, or 11 till 8. How's that?
Pretty easy. Pretty easy. Thank you.
Second by Mr. Harris. Further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, it's unanimous. Good luck.
Good luck.
Thank you very much.
I'm doing different.
I thought this was like a monster truck thing.
It's gonna be like, trying to bring the trucks down and get them all fixed up there.
Tony will be there.
My wife will be there. Okay, 8:15, right on time. We're gonna do the National Grid easement for the public safety complex.
So, Steve is from Vertex, our OPM, so if there's any other questions you have about the public safety complex, he's your guy.
Right. So, as Tricia just said, Steve is from Vertex, and you're the project management, so what are you trying to do here? I think I know, but...
Well, this is a standard request for an easement from National Grid to, for the permanent electrical service that will provide electricity to the complex. The route is identified in the, in the plan, but basically it's just gonna come in from 3A and go underground directly up to a transformer, and that will provide the service to the building.
Is it underground, Steve?
Yes.
That's all I care about.
And what will actually be, it'll just be like a green box?
Yes, standard transformer, yes, yes, right up by the building.
Any questions?
No.
Are we on time right now? Are we on schedule with the site planning, getting ready to pour cement for footings and all?
It's actually ongoing. Foundations are well underway. It's been a weird winter, but...
With the weather, but not so bad like last year.
Yeah, it hasn't been.
God bless.
Good, a motion on the easement?
Yeah, I'm just trying to find it.
Is there a motion?
It was handed out to...
Oh, oh, here it is. Move the board of excitement grant and electrical easement to National Grid for the public safety complex on Chief Justice Cushing Highway.
I'll second that.
Second by Mr. Danny. Further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, it's unanimous, four to zero. So, any other questions for Steve regarding the project? So, what's, what's the completion date?
Next February.
Next February? And what should people expect to see over the next couple of months? Is there, the foundations will be poured, is the framing gonna go up, or...
Yeah, in April, steel will start to arrive, but foundations are well along, probably 50% in place already.
Right.
Site work will...
Leveling of the property, is that all done at this point, or...
Not quite. This unsuitable work still continues, and it's tracking just about what was expected in terms of the amount and depth of the unsuitable material, so that's going just about as planned, and so things are progressing well.
We won't have steel till April. You won't, you'll be busy till April? I thought that would be going up next.
Well, you start the work and progress with it, and then you put the steel up as quickly as you can get it, based on when the contract gets awarded and all the contracting gets done and the, all the plans and shop drawings and all get, all get created, and then you get as quickly as you can. There is a sequencing that'll happen there to get the, the easier stuff to fabricate first, and then it'll flow from there. So, the foundations will well be in place.
I see that, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, and then, and then all the underground utilities will take place before the steel goes up, yeah, so it'll, it'll flow just fine.
There's enough for you to do till April.
Oh, yes, there's plenty to do, yes.
Because things are moving along really good.
Yeah.
This is a four to six-week turnaround, what you're voting tonight, so...
Oh, to get the easement?
Yeah, we're gonna try to expedite it as soon as possible, but we're dependent on Mass DOT and National for stuff like this, so even though the contract is ready to move, we have to wait for stuff like this.
Wait, any more, any questions?
And we'll do the, we're gonna be doing, sorry, the, the pad for the...
Transformer?
Radio communications tower.
No.
Two.
Marty?
So, just a question, so when they, when we do this for the public safety building, is anything done differently if we have an emergency generator system in there, which we will have?
Not, no different for this item. This is just the permanent power, and that's brought in, the emergency generator will be, will be connected, but on the other side of, of the transformer and the meter.
Okay.
Yeah.
Because I know in some states, when you've got an emergency generator system like that, it's actually done differently so that it operates, it operates differently from the feed on the outside, so...
It's standard, yes.
Okay.
Great. Steve, thanks for coming in.
Great, thank you.
Thanks.
Eight twenty.
We'll do the gas next evening, okay?
Okay.
Yes, we'll do the gas next week.
Let's put him, if, if they're quick, let's put him first, Florine.
At the next evening?
Yeah, just...
So, you don't have to wait as long, Steve?
You don't have to wait as long, and I'm sure we're paying for it.
Thanks, Steve.
Okay, now we are on...
Conservation.
Conservation restrictions. Karen Conley, Chairperson at CPC, and it looks like you've got some conservation people with you.
I do, and I don't charge by the hour, so don't worry. If I did, you would have to worry.
We're gonna skip this and...
Just gonna bump up your budget again.
Oh, good idea. We're here tonight to talk about conservation restrictions on land that we purchased through CPC. I was just thinking to myself, it's kind of like a bit of low-grade headache. You don't think it's gonna kill you, but you really wanna get rid of it, and so, thank goodness that Frank picked up the ball and found us a group that I think would be a very suitable group for us to work with, and Penny Scott Pipes has done all the work with the group, so I'm gonna leave it to them to talk about. Frank, if you wouldn't mind talking about New England Forestry Foundation, which is the group we're thinking about. Obviously, we have to come before you many times before this whole process is done, but we should get it done, because if we don't get it done, we're not gonna be eligible for grants, for example, in certain areas, so, so if you wouldn't mind, Frank?
Well, but to give you ample credit, this is something that has gone on for a very long time, and when we acquire a piece of property through community preservation funds, we're required to put a conservation restriction on those properties, and a few were done because we did one with the Cohasset Water Commission, and we also got a grant for one, but aside from those, we've really been lax in getting these conservation restrictions completed. Some of it has to do with legalities, but a lot of it's just that Karen has just moved this along, so, and then Penny's been willing to, to pick up the ball and make some of those connections. Back when we were thinking about how these conservation restrictions would be structured on land in the West End, we thought about different ways that that land would get used, passive recreation, the hiking and, and maybe mountain biking, different things, and then we know that there's things that we'd like to not have happen, like, you know, motocross or, or something like that. So, those are fairly simple, but there's more complex ones, how the woods is used for different purposes. I have a personal feeling that, that a forest could be used for a number of, of things, including harvesting of some of the wood, firewood for our residents in town, and the possibility of harvesting some timber selectively, as well as habitat management for different wildlife. So, there's a whole bunch of things that you'd like to do with that, and there's several organizations that could hold those conservation restrictions. Big organizations like the Trustees for Reservations or Audubon might be people that would do that, but I think they're a little more restrictive than we might wanna do in some applications, and the other part is that they're fairly expensive. And I've known about New England Forest Foundation for a long time, and had contacted them quite a while back, had some early feedback, and then it sort of didn't move much further. And to Penny's douche, has pushed it right along, and we've met with a couple of folks from New England Forest Foundation about a week ago, walked a little bit of Bates Lane property. They like what they've seen, the, the amount of property that we've acquired and, and having protection, and they actually have to vote this. They have, they're a nonprofit, they have a board of directors. They'll have to approve the town for that, but I, they felt pretty strongly that, that this is something that they could or would do with the town of Situate. They'll sort of be looking over our shoulder to make sure that the things that we said that we would do with that property when we got the money from townsfolk and the state are enforced, so that people won't be doing things on the town property that are illegal or that, that uses that aren't...
Permit, yeah.
Allowed won't get done. So, it's, it's a, it's sort of a counterbalance, if you would. And so, this New England Forest Foundation is Massachusetts-based, they're in Littleton, but they go all over the, the country, mostly New England. They actually are conservation holders for almost a million acres in the state of Maine, so they're, they're not a, a small organization, but they, they've, they've got a good reputation, and they can help us get a forester in, help us with some of our programs, and not just the forestry aspect, but different habitat projects. We discussed a series of those things the other day, so it was interesting, and they have good knowledge in those pieces, so I think they're the right mix for our, our town.
Did, did you get the link that we sent you?
Yep.
Okay. So, Penny's been dealing with them most especially, so she can fill you in on some of the costs.
Okay, what they, what would really like to do is in talking to Whit and Betsy last week, and we went up to the Bates Lane area, okay? Up the Bates Lane area altogether between CPC-owned properties and properties in the Bates Lane area and down by Hubble's off the Indian Trail. We have land that's conservation care, all right? And in talking to them, they thought the best thing to do would, to take all these properties along with the, what's under the custody of the Conservation Commission, and put a CR on them all.
As one unit?
Like one, one big umbrella, and we can add to that, because they did say that they'd take on the small properties for us too, because they usually like to do thirty-plus acres in a section, so they came up, their, their formula to take the 447 acres, which is a ballpark figure, because we would have to fine, fine tune it, would be $15,500 one time, and then there would be $1,940 that would be for the monitoring of the land. And what they would do is they would come out each year and they would monitor the land to make sure that it is the way it should be, that nothing illegal is being done on it in these areas that they would walk. Some they can do just by a drive-by, the smaller, smaller pieces, but the big pieces that come out. So, I guess the, oh, the interesting thing, very interesting, was there are four properties that already have CRs on them, and we have nine, nine other properties that don't have CRs. What we can do with that, they would come under this umbrella too. You are allowed to put a CR on top of another CR as long as it is not less stringent, meaning that you would, you might up the ante a little bit, but you could not lower it. Okay, so that, to me, was great, great news, because we do have four that have, have a CR on them, but wouldn't it be nice where they're all in the same area, have them all under this one umbrella in this one management? And we did talk to them a little bit about harvesting some, some of the areas, and they tell us which areas would be good to harvest, and it's not a clear cut. We would never look at a clear cut, but to make the forest a very healthy forest for the people to walk in and also for the animals. I, I'm, I'm just really excited to have somebody that's interested in holding the CRs on all these properties, and I guess I'm kinda looking for your blessing to go forward with this group.
Just one more quick thing. There are multiple lesser pieces of property that would need to come into that, that we bought with community preservation money, like off of Country Way, the Litchfield and Lynn properties, because they were bought with CPC funds, the Marachi property, those need to be protected as well, and even though they're not thirty acres, if they're doing a CR for the town, they'll pick up those individual pieces, and they actually even purchase an insurance policy to work with that. It's kind of an interesting piece that all comes together, but these people don't have any ownership. It's strictly a monitoring and assuring that the property is, is done, dealt with as we...
Would the Appleton Field also fall into that?
Absolutely.
Quick question on that. So, that one's farmed, right?
That's okay.
So, but I'm saying, some of that land, could it still be farmland? Used for farmland? I'm not saying we're going to, when I'm like...
Well, we are using it, actually. We've got it, we license an organic farmer.
No, not just that land, but other parcels that we have in town. If we wanted to, could we...
Harvest farming of different pieces would certainly be, yeah, yeah.
Just because it's forestry foundation doesn't mean that that's all they do, so, you know, that would be like if we went with Audubon, it wouldn't mean that it was only about the birds or whatever, so it's really just someone to hold the restrictions, and they, the only requirement they make of us is that, I think it was over two years, we have to have some sort of a management plan...
Yeah.
That satisfies, that, that we are managing what we own in some way, and that can mean we're leaving the self-swamp alone who wants to go down there, or that we've added trails, or that we've got a plan in place to add trails, to add access, to add signage, so it would be a way of holding us responsible as well. I think we've done pretty well gathering up this land, and now I think we're in a position where we have to do something with it that benefits the whole community.
So, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, ma'am.
So, I have a couple of questions. What's the term on their agreement? Is it up to us? Is it five-year, 10-year, 15-year?
I think it's forever.
It's in perpetuity.
In perpetuity?
Yeah.
And does it all come out of CPC funds?
Yes.
What happens in the event that CPC, you know, worst-case scenario, let's just think worst-case scenario, it goes away? You know, what's our liability on that?
The finances is a, is a one-shot deal.
Well, it's $2,000 a year, right?
Oh, I thought it was $2,000 a year.
No.
Oh, really?
The $1,900 is a...
Oh, it's a one-time, 1940 is one-time as well?
Seventeen, four, forty, one time.
But what about the 1940?
That...
That's included?
That's right, a baseline, a baseline assessment.
Oh, okay, so that's not a annual...
So, they're gonna come every year and look at this property for nothing?
What they do is they take the money and they invest it, okay? And whatever.
It's a pretty, I mean, they're not...
Yeah, they...
Oh, I know they're not...
I'm trying to understand what's, what's at cost.
Yeah, no, it's a one-shot deal. Because I asked...
Well, and we are in the very, very preliminary stages of this, and clearly, if we were to go forward, there would have to be town council involved, you would have to be involved, you would have to accept them, you would have to, along with the Conservation Commission, dictate what the terms are. We're a long way from this being done, but we're much further along than we've been, so I think we'd like, the sense of the board at least, that you would like us to keep going in this direction. If, if you think that you want us to try to find some other organizations, you know, it's just been such a struggle. Trustees of Reservations, for example, won't even take anything unless you've got an endowment attached to it, and some other places are just out of our, our league in terms of finances, so I think that if, if CPC were to go out of business, there'd just have to be a line item in the budget at conservation for whatever, you know?
Yeah, and I'm, trust me, I'm not...
But I think we're not, we need to...
But, my other question is, who develops the management plan?
We would...
We do.
Who's we?
Working Conservation Commission with a forester...
Okay.
And maybe a forester and probably an environmental person, because we're gonna be balancing things that, we've got a couple of ideas on some parcels that might be good for habitat enhancement. The Crosby piece, there was a couple of stands of red pines that were planted that just don't work out in this area, and they did. And those would be a couple of areas that we might clear and then start an emerging growth habitat, which would be good for different species of what, you know, hear about things like there are songbirds that used to be here, or different things. And some of it has to do with the habitat and why we've seen deer and coyotes and turkeys versus foxes and grouse. And a lot of it has to do with the habitat, not so much with development, but just the change in the way the forests have developed over the years.
Frank, could they put restrictions on that may not allow hunting anymore where they can currently hunt?
No, no, in fact, they're...
They ain't having to.
If you have a forester, we, a couple of years ago, we had the Conway School come out to do a study on the property. And with that was a forester from U.S. Fish and Wildlife, and we spent a day in the woods with him. And he showed us where there was not a lot of regeneration because there was too much deer browse. So again, we need to balance all of that. We want the woods, those areas to be open to the public and for them to be safe. We've developed some signage, we're gonna work further with programs to make sure that everybody in Sitewatt has the opportunity to use that woods in a safe way. But I don't believe, I think hunting would be something that would be continued unless for some reason it was detrimental to growth.
Well, there's not a hunting restriction on it now, so...
There is not, but I will say that I went on their website and looked up, they've got regulations in terms of hunting. And, you know, so I think that it's a matter of communication with the community, it's a matter of everyone understanding what is allowed, when it's allowed. It's things like, they don't allow anyone to put a nail in a tree for a tree stand, you have to be, and you have to have your contact information on it, the name of the hunter who's put it up. So I think it's really understanding the rules of the road for everyone and being more clear with our communication, which is, you know, I guess, to bring up a sore subject, the five acres that got cleared over on 3A, people don't understand that we've now got 400-plus acres in the West End, and they don't know it because the signage isn't great, it's not particularly accessible. And if you put Norris Reservation together with World's End, that's how big that parcel of land is out there. And so I think that getting this part of this done will help us, and working with a reputable organization will help us develop a really good plan. And, you know, will put us in a position where we've got to develop the plan.
Right. Can you remove the prior one? I don't know who's holding those other four, but can we get rid of that and just use these people?
They said their CR would just go on top of the CRs that are held, okay?
I don't think you could remove, the Cohasset Water Company paid part of the purchase of one of those pieces, so I believe they're on their perpetuity as well. The other one that we've used has been Maxwell because they were the expediter in that. And I think one of the other reasons that we're doing that is because Maxwell is a smaller organization, that we want to be guaranteed that there's a good long-term holder of these CRs. So there'd really be no need to remove them. At some point, they may not, or they may blend in with these others, but...
I just didn't know who's in charge of monitoring, who's in charge of approving plans, you know, how does all that work if two people...
I don't think that they'll be, like Penny said, we can't put anything that's less restrictive.
Right.
I think in most cases, we're gonna look for more. But, you know, we're gonna, as we develop some of these, we make sure that, you know, public safety is part of that, that as we have been right along, fire department, police can even get out there and rescue somebody or patrol it if there's issues, you know, we have all those sort of things to think about.
Good. So what do you guys think? Is this something, anyone opposed to this?
No.
Good, so you have our blessing. Great job.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
And I like the fact that they're a local company, you know, a local entity, and sounds like it's exactly what we need.
And just to update you, one thing we have done is we've gotten the approval for the access points, the new parking, all that sort of stuff. And the good news is Paul Scott, our former engineer, who's doing some hard work has been...
Where are you talking about?
At Bates.
At Bates, at Appleton. Yep.
And Higgins-McAllister. So we'll have good parking places hopefully by the summer with new trailheads and all that sort of thing.
Great.
We're looking forward to it.
Thank you guys for all your work, that's great.
Thanks so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We'll keep moving. Oops, sorry.
Moving right along. It is a discussion vote on 138 Stockbridge Road.
Catching up. We're catching up.
I know.
Steve, how are you?
Well, thank you, good morning, and good afternoon, Steve.
Evening. Yep.
I'm here for a while. Steve Crissaro from, to thanks McDonald, what's that, tell it, out in the harbor.
Great.
On behalf of Richard Payne.
Who, on behalf of who?
On behalf of Richard Payne.
Okay, so he's the one that owns the property?
Previous owner.
Great, previous owner.
Yes.
Okay, so why don't you give us a quick overview?
So, well, I'm here tonight to ask the board to voluntarily rescind the tax title foreclosure to allow Mr. Payne to repurchase the property from the town. He has the ability to make the town whole, and most of the details are in the papers that I've provided to you tonight.
Okay, so he didn't pay any, for how long, when did this whole thing start?
It started in 2009.
2009, so the town took it over, and now he has some other source of funding that he wants to come pay all his debts and take the property back?
Yes.
Great, and what's, what is the, what's the use of the property gonna be?
It is currently a vacant lot, and it is going to be, hopefully, determined to be a buildable lot and a single-family residence.
So he has a builder that's gonna buy it?
Is working with him, and that's the assistance that he has to make the town whole and to repurchase the property. And then the whole situation is contingent upon being able to get it permitted from the town, so all necessary authorities and permits to turn it into a single-family residence.
So, go ahead.
Probably gonna say, go ahead.
Exactly. So one has to happen first?
Well, so we're gonna get your permission to move in that direction, and then we'll submit a purchase and sale to town council. One of the contingencies in the PNS will be that the buyer would move forward contingent upon being able to get all necessary approvals and permits from the town to have it classified as a, you know, buildable lot for a single-family residence.
And if it's not, and if it's not buildable, it's wet, or it won't, whatever, there isn't sewer there, so just, for whatever reason, no fault of the towns, other than these are the, these are our laws and bylaws, then he's gonna say, keep it?
He would, yeah, he would not move forward on it, because it's with assistance, you know, from an investor who is going to allow him to move forward. Any engineering that we do in relation to it, I mean, the likelihood of obtaining the necessary approvals is good because the largest hurdle was a permit. The property is in the town floodplain, and in 2006, there was an application for a special permit to build. It was approved and granted, so we're expecting, and we've talked to a few folks who are conservation in the building inspector's office, who feel that we will get that same approval.
Steve, it's 138. Who are some, who are some of your butters?
Well, Mr. Payne was, one of the other butters, the Nielsen property.
Right. Is it down, it's well before our access to the old landfill?
Yes.
Well before that. It has frontage on Stockbridge?
It does.
And this house is left and right, unless there's a spring under it, if I was a bedding person, or if I was a certain developer.
The property kinda...
Yeah, I see that there, but there is, the, well, the house, well, yeah, it doesn't, it's, who knows?
So the house is on the front of the property right now?
No, there's a vacant lot.
There's no house.
What's all that stuff?
That's proposed.
Yeah, it's topography and all that stuff, I think. And you can't really tell, but that might be wetlands. Is that wetlands, John, the little dots?
Yeah, there is, there are wetlands on the property.
Right. So the L, the back of the L, is not gonna be used at all?
I don't think so, I think that's where all the wetlands are. So the wetlands are going to be reflagged, but talking to Pat Galvin, Galvin, he said that he thinks that the wetlands, the line hasn't changed. So all the approvals that were obtained 10 years ago are most likely to be, well, they're not still valid, but they're most likely to be granted again and approved.
So there might have been a permit in the works 10, I'm sorry?
There were, there were approvals.
It got passed.
There were approvals that have been granted, but they expired.
Right, okay.
Pam, do you have any, any thoughts on this?
Well, I was just discussing with Nancy, I don't know if it's good for the town to be contingent on a building permit, but I definitely would like that item flagged. And my only other concern is, I just wanna put it out there that I've worked really hard to get these paid off before they get to this problem, to get this through Land Court and all my time and my attorney's time. This has been a tax title since 2009. So I really wish, just putting it out there, you know, I'm really reachable, I have tried to contact this individual several times. You know, I would just put it out there to the rest of the residents that are in the situation to try to get in touch with me before it gets to this extent. That's the only two things I have to do.
But you don't have a problem with them paying it off?
Well, I don't, I'm not real sure about...
Contingent, well, I mean, what's the alternative?
Contingent on the building permit.
If we don't do it this way, then what do you, then we have to sell the property. Right? Is that, I mean, what stage are you at in terms of the lien right now?
Well, right now, they, to get this back from the town, you know, the town would get over $47,000, which, yeah, I'd rather take the money and give it back to the owner, and if he can put a piece of property on it, and if he can make money on, put a house on it, and he can make money on it, absolutely. But, you know, being contingent on a building permit, which I'm sure Nancy's discussing now, she probably knows more about it than I.
So what happens if he doesn't get the permits? What's the town gonna do with the land?
Well, we sell it.
So where, are we at that stage right now? We're gonna sell it?
Two months, six months? Is that what you're, you have a timeframe?
When are we gonna sell it?
Well, when I could get it done.
So we would, it's in the process now where we'd sell it probably within the next year or so?
Absolutely.
Okay, and will we get more than $50,000 for it? Probably?
Well, then again, if no one can build on it, who knows?
So I was gonna say, if it's not buildable, who's gonna buy it?
If nobody wants it, or...
That's a possibility.
You know, that's always possible.
I mean, there's a good chunk of land, isn't there? How much acreage is it?
A good deal of it is wet, there's just enough uplands to have it meet the zoning requirement.
But the guy owns the backyard of...
Eighty-eight thousand square feet, and 32% of it is upland.
But the backyard of both of these abutting properties, right? That L?
Oh, I know exactly, it's right next to Bobby Tillman's, yeah, I know exactly where it is.
Is that dry back there, Sean? Or is that, that?
There's a lot of mulch back there.
There's mulch down there, I think. Right? Yeah, that's the back of...
I mean, they may want it.
I just, the question I have is, so they go forward, because I'm all for giving this back, getting our money, that's my, that's what I would be for, but what if this drags on for another four or five months trying to get the permits and stuff in place? Where are we at money-wise at that point, you know?
Well, again, the purchase price is making the town whole, so...
Whatever it is on that day?
At this point, we have a payoff statement that was good through January 18th.
Gotcha.
And it's stated in the purchase and sale that whatever the town's costs were, you know, town council, legal fees, everything, and there is a 16% interest on what is owed, so, not that that's a great situation for the town for all the time and effort that they put into it, but it is making the town whole for all costs and expenses that they've incurred. And again, it's, you know, part of this is a, you know, a request from a citizen to help them out of a situation.
Sure.
No, I, when you and I had spoke about it earlier, I think it's wonderful. I don't wanna sit up here and, you know, be any part of taking someone's property. But I didn't know it was contingent. Someone needs to take a little bit of, a little risk here, I think, you know, and developers do it every day, and if I was a developer, I'd probably bet on that, had a permit at one time.
We can talk about that in the purchase and sale. I mean, the first step is to get your blessing to reverse, and I'll submit the purchase and sale for negotiation, but what we've put in there is a rather standard term when you're buying it, because it's with the assistance of an investor that Mr. Payne is being able to do this. And so, same time, trying to have the, able to attract an investor, you know, trying to protect their interests too, but, I mean, I understand what you're saying, that that's a point that can be worked out, and, you know, there's been diligent efforts already made, and there's been progress made on determining, you know, these issues, so I think we're gonna be able to get a quick determination. We do have to go before the ZVA for a special permit because it is a vacant lot within the town floodplain, which, again, when you talk about the town selling it and you're saying, what can you get for it, when you're selling a parcel that has these types of wrinkles, you're not gonna necessarily have people, you know, knocking down your door because there is some work to do. There is going before the ZVA to get that permit.
But Steve, two months ago, Steve Bajarko was in here, he spent $100,000, and he's got a drain adjustment right smack through the middle of it, and he's gonna pay thousands to have concrete pipe brought around the perimeter of it, and still, I know it's Old Oak and Buckett Road and it's Stockbridge Road, maybe, maybe two different values, but still, you know...
So have we, have you notified the butters? I mean, how do we, how does that work now? Like...
I don't think we have to notify the butters, or he doesn't, I don't...
From what I was told by town council, it was a matter of, this is something that's within your discretion, and coming before you to ask you to reverse that tax title is within your discretion. This isn't statutory, it's a matter of being able to make the town whole. All money's owed, all past taxes, delinquent taxes, current taxes, cost, expenses, 16% interest, and with that ability, would the board agree to allow the previous owner to repurchase it?
Town owns the property, it was taken at tax taking, so now we, as Board of Selectmen...
We'll sell it back to them.
Can say, we can, at this point, we can say, you know what, the judgment will request that it be vacated, and ultimately, they can buy it back, in a sense, that's really what we're talking about. The redemption period's been, it's come and gone, otherwise they could have redeemed it after the, you know, but at this point, it's ours officially, so...
So they wanna buy this property from us for $47,000?
To, correct.
So, just to be clear, your role tonight is to vacate the judgment. So if you vacate the judgment, then you don't own the property because you don't accept the judgment. So it reverts back to the owner. The other issue is, and that's why I changed the executive motion that Lorraine gave you, is it is in the floodplain, and 10 years ago, it was a buildable lot. Attorney Crissaro is aware of the Doherty decision, but I would do your vote contingent if you're inclined to do this, contingent on Jim Toomey reviewing it again to determine if indeed it is, but the PNS is contingent also upon him getting all the permits. But conceivably, if, you know, we have to do our own due diligence about building in a floodplain, regardless of whether there's water there or not, so I would want Jim to look at it.
And it's Jim, but as far as the real review, it's the bylaw requires it to go before the zoning board for that reason. And the, as we were saying, with the Doherty decision, it's a matter of proving that that land is not prone to flooding. And so again, 10 years ago, when it had been presented to the board, then planning board, now ZVA, it was determined to be not prone to flooding and therefore was granted a building permit.
Yes.
So just point of clarification here, we make this motion contingent upon all those permits, those permits don't go through, we're back to square one, right? No money, we own the property, so basically it's delaying...
If we vacate this decision, I think it's done.
They still owe the money.
But so if we vacate the decision...
They have the property back, and they owe us their back taxes.
They still owe us those back taxes.
Right, but then we have to go through the whole process again to, if they don't pay us, to get the property back again, to this stage, is that right?
Right, and I don't know how friendly Land Court's gonna be the second time around.
Well, actually, I don't think that tonight, if you make that decision, and this is what we, I'll go over with Jim Toomey, that automatically it reverts back to the previous owner just by rescinding that tax title. I mean, I've prepared a purchase and sale with terms that needs to be executed by the Board of Selectmen and the buyer, and to me, that's, you know, it's your decision which leads to that step, which then would lead to the buyer taking that back.
It's, I'm confused in the piece on how, if we vacate the judgment and the previous owner owns it, we avoid owning property that has to be bid under the procurement laws to anybody who's interested in bidding on it. Right, yes. That's the piece I'm missing. I don't think the board can just sign a PNS one day.
Actually, town council on this was not Jim Toomey, it was...
Jim Capolo.
Jim Capolo. And so I think that maybe, which is the first time I've dealt with him, and I think that maybe he handles this type of issue specifically for the town. Not that Jim wouldn't, you know, participate, review and comment, but...
You're right.
I think that the way that Attorney Capolo had presented it to me was that coming before the board, get your blessing to reverse, to rescind that. the board, get your blessing to reverse, to rescind that, and then it would allow the buyer to come forth. And so I don't think that by rescinding the decision, it immediately reverts back to the prior owner. It just allows for that to occur.
Okay. My opinion is... Go ahead, Pam.
I'm a little confused about the purchase and sale. I've been talking to Jim Capola, too, so I think there's a little bit of confusion here. If it went back to the property owner, I was told that everything's paid off through FY16 estate tax.
See, I need to know the answer to that, because here's the thing. I'm happy... I said this to you before, Steve, when you approached me. I have no issues with having a property owner come back, pay his taxes, get the property. We're not in the business of taking property. But the only thing I'm a little nervous is, because today I saw Capola's email, and if we vacate the judgment, then in essence, where does that put us with respect to the amount that was owed? Because I know under tax takings, it's owed. We have first priority. Now, if we vacate it and we're saying no, the judgment's no longer valid, where does the... Where do we stand for the forty-seven thousand that's owed as of today?
Well, I think that's... That's in part where the purchase and sale comes along, because if you rescind that, and then you've got to sign agreement for that same amount.
But we're not a party to it, though. The town's not a party to the PNS. It's only... It's the property owner and whoever the buyer is, so we don't have any skin in the game.
Well, no, and this...
That's what I'm saying.
And the other... The other thing with PNS, and I guess we'll... Like, I haven't had the opportunity to speak with Toomey or Capola about this specific stage, what you're talking about now. I did put in several calls to Toomey, but I thought he was not wanting to drive up legal costs and, you know, making the payoff even higher. So I haven't heard back from him. But the purchase and sale, in part, is what is necessary also to, for the applicant, to go to the town to apply for these permits. Because if we aren't the owners of the property, which we are not at this point, by way of the PNS, it would give us at least the authority to submit applications.
Yeah.
But I also think that the purchase and sale might also, too, address the point that you're talking about, John, that if you rescind the tax title, it doesn't mean that those taxes are no longer owed if you've got to sign agreement, that the buyer's saying that they will pay these. But, you know, I do, I think it's a procedural issue that needs to be ironed out.
Yeah. I can't vote on it tonight, because I'm looking at this going, I need to know exactly what the deal is once we vacate the judgment.
Yeah.
Because it doesn't make it null and void, the full amount of forty-seven thousand. I understand the contract, but what if the prospective buyer walks Mr. Payne... Payne?
Yes.
Payne is now in possession, and now the town has basically waived its forty-seven thousand. Now we have to go back. It just... That could be a major... I think we need just clarification from Jim, not Toomey, but Capola, is the one I'd be wanting.
Great. So why don't we get some answers on this? I think, is the sense of the board that we don't have a problem with him... It's almost like, you give us forty-seven grand, you can have the property back and do what you want. So, and I think...
And I think that that's what town council, in a sense, is looking for, is that blessing, to be able to move forward. And to do it... I mean, I wasn't submitting a PNS for you folks to sign tonight or anything of that, but it's something that, you know, to show that we are stating that we will pay that amount. And again, it's got an asterisk next to it, saying that it's not just the amount that was provided to us in this payoff statement. It was good through January eighteenth, so we're already a month, you know, beyond that. But it's whatever that figure is at the end of this process, that the buyer will make the town whole. So as Jim and Attorney Capola need to weigh in on this, or anybody else needs to continue to work on this, so if there's, you know, more costs incurred, that we're agreeing to pay those.
You mentioned the procurement law of thirty thousand. In other words, this could... What was... What was your thinking on that? Just...
You can't sell real estate without going through procurement. So, I mean, if you look... If you stepped back from that and you just looked at it from...
Purely selling it.
Yeah, purely. You're giving someone who didn't pay their taxes an opportunity to come forward and say, okay, we'll sign this purchase and sale agreement, and I'll give you forty-seven thousand dollars so I can go forward if I get the permit. And I'm now the sole... I get like a second bite of developing my property, which I already lost to Land Court.
Right.
And as you know, John, getting through Land Court with a foreclosure degree, you can basically say, I stubbed my toe and I can't pay, and they'll give you a six-month extension.
I know.
It takes a long time to get through Land Court.
And that's happened.
My reason to looking at it is, and I'm not sure whether it could be fashioned this way, I'm concerned that if it's true that we vacate it and we potentially lose the forty-seven thousand, worst-case scenario, then my thoughts would be, then Mr. Payne, if he fails to sell the property, then we'd have to then deed the property back, or give the property back to the town. But in other words, so that we're not going to be out of potentially forty-seven thousand and no longer have the property. I'm not even sure how that would work itself out.
And actually, I think Attorney Capola is pretty well-versed. I mean, this is not an uncommon request. It's not something that is, you know, just not a rare occurrence for somebody to come forth, because he instantly launched into, this is what needs to be done, this is the solution. So needing him to weigh in a little bit on this procedural part. But knowing that the board is willing to give its blessings to the general spirit of the transaction, I think is what is needed. You know, without obviously committing to anything by way of a vote, but not having those procedural questions answered.
Great. Thanks, Steve. We'll put it on the agenda a couple of weeks when we get an opinion back from them.
All right. Thank you, folks.
Thanks. We're going to go back to the five budgets that we passed on and go over them. First one is 131 Advisory Committee.
Advisory Committee, it's to print the booklet and pay for their secretaries, level-funded from FY16.
Thousand nine hundred fourteen dollars.
Yep. And the booklet is fifty-seven hundred of the... Okay, any questions?
No.
All right. Next one is 132, which is a reserve fund.
Reserve fund has had ninety thousand dollars in it forever, which is an unbelievably low amount. What was it, Nancy? Like point zero zero two percent?
We've never spent it.
And it usually has a surplus, so it is level-funded from the previous thirty years.
Fifteen years, at least.
Yeah.
And this is money that the advisory committee can allocate to extra... Extraordinary expenses.
Unforeseen, yep.
Any questions? Workman's comp is 912.
Town is self-insured for its workers' compensation. It pays for medical complaint... Federal claims, doctor prescriptions, and there's a stop-loss on the prop... On the claims for maximum exposure. We also have a third-party administrator to review the bills and help us get folks back to work. Our fund goal for this back in 2010 was seven-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars. We expect to hit that number in the next twelve months. This budget has been reduced as a result for the first time in six years, so...
So the total fund balance right now is 536 at the end of fiscal year 15?
Yes.
And we want to get 750?
Seven fifty is the fund goal.
What's the stop-loss? What number?
Two fifty, I believe. We just renewed it. I just saw the quotes last week. Two... I want to say two fifty, Tony.
And the annual expense, looks like it ranges between a hundred and a hundred and eighty, a couple of bad years, but...
So most of these expenditures go to claims from many, many years ago. We have a pretty good workers' compensation ratio. We have a safety committee. We've improved that process quite a bit. So that's allowed us to build the fund balance. We changed the way the account operated more, you know, from advisory. So it's fifty-seven thousand dollars less, and that's good, because we need every penny we can get in this budget.
Any questions? Next one is 913 unemployment.
Nancy can speak to this as well. This budget is up. Is it up?
Yeah, we actually reduced it from seventeen from seventy-five thousand to sixty-six thousand. We... We're going to go a little bit lower where we were doing forecasts, but then aside the breakup, because we were tracking a level high this year. Right now, we're around twenty-nine thousand dollars extended on a seventy-five thousand dollar budget.
So Nancy and I had loaded originally in our revenue and expense assumptions, but when forecasts went over it, the school committee expressed some concerns, Mr. Dolan... Don one. So we upped it... So it's still lower, but we upped it from what we originally do.
Right. And the last years have been thirty-nine, thirty, thirty-five, forty-seven. Nope, wrong way. Sorry. Eighteen, forty, thirty-four, fifty-five.
We were coming up those, when the economic downturn, when we were really having to appropriate quite a bit of money, as you can see, two-hundred-and-eleven, one-hundred-and-eighty-four thousand in those years.
Sorry. Any questions?
Yeah, well, on the town side, we've never... Well, not recently, or has anyone collected unemployment?
It's rare. And you... It's something where, you know, it's something we've disputed, because we probably... We wouldn't normally have to pay it.
Right. Right.
Yeah.
Not like we laid anyone off.
No.
Right.
And on the school side, it's usually for, like, a contract, it's not...
And the last one for tonight is 549, which is Commission for Disability.
Five thousand, level-funded as it's been for the last six years. This is...
Have to do it in order to get your...
It offsets transportation costs, HP transportation costs in the council on aging, and they have used this money. This money wasn't touched for a long time, and then, I think in the last few years, we've actually started to.
Any questions? Great. Okay, so now, the budget's done. We have a one-day liquor license request for Silent Chef, or a diamond party, I think?
I think you're saying...
All right. Give us...
Do you want a motion? Please.
I'll move the Board of Selectmen to approve a one-day wine and malt license to Silent Chef for May seventh, 2016, from 3:00 p.m. until 9:00 p.m. at the Situate Maritime Center.
Second by Ms. Currie, further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, it's unanimous. We already did number two. The next one is the seasonal population for the ABCC. It's requesting that it goes up to twenty-eight thousand five hundred. This is the annual allocation.
I'll move to approve the seasonal population estimate of twenty-eight thousand five hundred for 2016.
Second by Mr. Harris, further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, it is unanimous. Lastly, is just a review of the pedicab licensing regulation. Who brought this before the town?
I know, I was surprised that that was something that we regulate. It's not regulated by the state law?
No, so this is the residents who came in last year, who was interested in purchasing pedicab race, teenage on switch, and... But it's a senior care, that we have no licensing policy in such a... So I researched several other towns and cities who came up with a policy for the town search. I have one more structure, which is a search of police department.
Where's he going to petty?
He was specifically thinking, and, you know, we'll move further into that, but he was specifically thinking the Hamarock area.
So is he going to use it... Oh, never mind. So almost like a...
Yeah.
I mean, he wants to have a licensing process, that's a minimum apply for a license.
Right.
And then he'll go to the city, and then you can vote for it. But we can't get to that stuff until we have a policy.
So we... I read it, I'm sure everyone else read it, too, so should we just take in our advisement and vote it next?
Just take in our advisement now. I still... I got... I came back from planning and...
You'll talk to the police chief?
I'm going to talk to the police, you know, make sure we have everything we want, and then we'll come back to you the next meeting.
Yeah, your rules and regulations require you can't vote a policy the same night you see it. You have to...
It's a good rule. So if you have any questions...
Do we even want a pedicab business in our town?
You can't keep them out, essentially.
Do they have to have special liabilities and stuff? I mean, the same as like a cab would, or, I mean, how does that work?
It's different from a cab.
Right. No, I know exactly what they are, because I've seen them around Boston.
Hey, Mr. Davey, get on the handlebars.
Just wondering how that all works.
Yeah, well, Lorraine did some great work on it, and we, as she said, has she contacted a number of communities, and she took the best parts of them and created them for ours.
Who's responsible for the inspection? The police?
That's one of the things I have to work with, the police department. One community is a bike shop that does it. It's another community is the police department that does it.
Right. Well, that's part of what I was saying.
Yeah.
That whole thing, you know? I would think it'd be state-regulated.
No. There's not one way. So I need to meet with the citizens on that.
Hey. Good for him, if he can make it...
Still get the Uber.
Make it work.
Pedic by whatever they ask.
Well, that's... I mean, the bigger communities with taxi licenses are dealing with the Uber issue and the Lyft issue and...
Okay.
So, but, you know, it could be a possibility to transport people from Green Bush downtown or the golf course or whatever, just another means of green transportation, so...
To the beaches. The over-served people can be driven home and...
From the beaches to Maria's in back.
Golf course. That's our second.
Who was singing?
All right.
The golf course.
He was singing from a bridge way home. I was thinking about that one.
The dangerous road. Okay, correspondence. Do we... My computer died.
That's a lengthy one here for Maureen to read.
There's... The first one is just to give notice that there's a hazard... Hazard... God, hazard mitigation seminar on March 1st, the GAR Hall, held by our coastal resource officer, Nancy Durksey. So it starts at 6:00 to 8:00 PM on March 1st, which we have a Board of Selectmen in, and they said we can't go, but encourage folks to go there and talk about mitigating our flood hazard. This is a long one.
Sean can summarize it.
You mean Comcast?
Mosquito one? Oh, I'm on the mosquito one.
Oh. They're just saying they're going to continue, oh, their service of coming and spraying, and they gave statistics on how...
Oh, that's their annual report, actually.
Their annual report, yeah.
So you, actually, for the four of you watching, you can call the Plymouth County mosquito, and they will come and spray your house if mosquitoes are bad. You've just got to call them up, and they come out weekly to all the communities and spray different areas.
It'll be like 4:00 in the morning when they come through.
Little fog truck.
Right.
Is that it?
We have to change, we've been, we've tried, said it a couple times, but that, we've got to change the date of that St. Patrick's Parade from the 22nd to the 20th, on upcoming events.
Oh, thank you. Oh, I will do that change.
Maybe we're the ones who really look at this, but...
One from Comcast.
Yeah, I know.
Comcast sent a letter. It says commencement of renewal process, so it looks like they're going to renew their contract, I guess, with the town. Is that fair?
Yeah, we have an 18-month ascertainment process. Al is going to be coming in to talk to you about it, get to appoint some members of the licensing committee.
I like the letter. I like the letter.
We used him.
We will likely be changing council. It's what Al and I are working on.
The letter goes, "Over the years, we at Comcast have appreciated the opportunity to serve the citizens of the town of Situate." That's the reason why we pulled our office out of North Situate and moved all the way down to Plymouth. "We've done our best to provide the high-quality cable television service to the town and its residents, man." I've got like the worst Comcast at my house. I'm like, "This letter is just a joke." I'm like going through it, reading it, and so we're going to have to put up with them. So, anyway, I could go on and shred it further. It's just unbelievable.
Great, I think that's it for the correspondence. Acceptance in the minutes? Anyone have that up?
Ten minutes, let's see. Oh, did you get the Gatra breakfast correspondence?
Nope.
Last one.
All right, I'll do this.
That's for like the townspeople, the Hazes that are representing. Oh, great.
Oh, yeah, it's in Duxbury?
You can go if you want.
Duxbury, February 19th, Friday, 8:30 AM to 10:00 PM.
This Friday?
Or AM.
For breakfast? Sean will be there.
All right.
All right.
I'll move the Board of Selectmen to approve the minutes, meeting minutes, for the February 3rd, 2016 Board of Selectmen meeting.
Second by Ms. Currie, further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, it's unanimous.
I'll move to accept but not release the executive session minutes for February 3rd, 2016, since the matters discussed are still pending at this time.
Second.
Second by Mr. O'Toole, further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, it's unanimous. All right, other business. Any, Marty, any other business you want to talk about?
No, nothing, nothing tonight.
Sean?
I just want to say that I received a valentine from Jennifer, and it says, "Dear Mr. Danahy, Happy Valentine's Day. Thank you for working for the Board of Selectmen and helping to run town meetings. Situate wouldn't be the same without you. We appreciate everything you do. We are so lucky to have you in Situate." I mean, this is awesome. The town wouldn't run smoothly without you. "I hope you have a wonderful Valentine's Day. Sincerely, Jennifer." And she's in fifth grade at the Wampatac Elementary School. And all I can say is, Jennifer, that made my night. That is very cute, and I want to thank you very much.
Mine's better.
Can't beat this, can't beat this.
Dear Miss Maura C. Currie, just got my name right, Sean. Happy Valentine's Day. Thank you for leading our town meetings and overseeing the efficient and orderly operation of the Board of Selectmen's office. Without you, Situate would not run as smoothly. I hope you have a wonderful day. Your friend, Annalee." That's great. Thank you, Annalee. So cute, it's my first Valentine. I didn't get one last year. So very excited.
Mine says, "Situate wouldn't be the same without me."
So is mine.
Her says, "It wouldn't have run as smoothly."